Good evening. Seeing as we have a quorum, I'd like to call this regular session of the Bloomington Common Council to order with a clerk. Please call the roll.
Member Flaherty?
Here.
Ruff?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Pete Mott Smith?
Here.
Stossberg?
Here.
Daley?
Here.
Zulik?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
And Assari?
Present.
Thanks.
Thank you. This evening, we've got several items on our agenda. And before I begin that summary, I'd like to remind you all that it's been traditional for the past couple of years to start off a common council meetings with a land and labor acknowledgement. And I'm doing a little something different this year. And instead, I'm starting with information or facts that relate to diversity, history of segregation, other milestones, and that have marked our societal progress toward equity and understanding of cultural differences and similarities. And so to that end tonight, I want to lift up one thing, and then I'm going to throw the microphone over to Councilmember Zulik to talk about something different. But in light of some things going on at the federal level this week, I wanted to highlight Exodus Refugee Organization, which opened its Bloomington office in January of 2022. And they actually spent about five weeks working out of a hotel room while settling refugees. And to date, they've settled almost 500 refugees in Bloomington from all over the world. And I've been a part of their volunteer network. And I wanted to highlight them in part because of the great work that they've done and all of the volunteer hours that have been put in by so many members of our community. But I also wanted to highlight, you know, as I've gone around and worked with these refugees, as we've gone to doctor's appointments, and enrolled children in school, and interacted with teachers and community members of all kinds, and pharmacists, and people who check you out in the grocery store, and bus drivers, and all of those folks that kind of ate us every day. That's you all, members of our community, have all been incredibly welcoming. And I just want to highlight that as this piece that is Bloomington. And I for one, hope that we can continue to be that welcoming vision to people who come into our community regardless of where it is that they're coming from. And I also wanted to appreciate that Mayor Thompson also discussed that on Martin Luther King Junior Day at the library at an event there about refugees. So that is my highlight in terms of maybe a bright spot that as a community, we have been welcoming, and I hope that we continue to be welcoming. And then I want to pass it over to Councilmember Zulik, who also has a similar sentiment.
So recently, there was an executive order that rolls back a lot of equal opportunity policies at the federal level. And I just wanted to remind everyone that in our city code, our most recent ordinance that addresses this issue, in Ordinance 2302, in City Code 22 point, oh, I'm sorry, my computer is locking me out. Standby. So sorry, technical issues. In City Code 2.23.110, it is the public policy of the city and of the county upon appropriate county authority to provide all citizens equal opportunity for education, employment, access to public accommodations, and acquisition through purchase or rental of real property, including but not limited to housing, and to eliminate segregation or separation based on race, religion, color, sex, national origin, ancestry, sexual orientation, gender identity, disability, housing status, or status as a veteran, since such segregation is an impediment to equal opportunity. This is only the most recent city code update in a long history of Bloomington prioritizing equal opportunity for many different things. So, thank you.
Thank you. I hope that the rest of the council members up here besides myself and Councilmembers Zulik all stand together in supporting that sentiment. So, back to our agenda summation, we are going to start with approval of minutes from April 3, 2024. Then we'll have time for reports, 20 minutes set aside for each section of reports, first by council members, then by mayor and city offices, of which I do not believe that we have a report from them this evening. Then we'll have reports from council committees, where we have a report from the Special Committee on Council Processes. And then will be our first period of public comment after that. This will be followed by appointments to boards and commissions. We have several appointments to boards and commissions this evening, since it's the beginning of the year. That will be followed by legislation for first readings. Legislation for first readings do not have a discussion component to them, but they are Ordinance 2025-03, related to the fix, amending the fixed salaries for appointed officers, non-union, and AFSMI employees. Ordinance 2025-04, to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding establishment of the Transportation Commission. And finally, the third legislation for first reading is appropriation Ordinance 2025-01, to additionally appropriate from the General Fund for Downtown Outreach Program. Then we will have legislation for second readings and resolutions. So these three items, there will be discussion attached to them, and there will be public comment for each of them. We start with Ordinance 2025-01, to amend the district ordinance and preliminary plan for a PUD development, the Curry PUD, located at 105 South Pete Ellis Drive. That will be followed by discussion of Ordinance 2025-02, which is to establish the outdoor dining program for the downtown corridor this year. And finally, Resolution 2025-01, which relates to determining after investigation that an expansion of the Monroe Convention Center is needed, and other related matters. After the legislation, we'll have our second period of public comment for items not on the agenda. And you can only, in the public, you can speak at one of those periods of general public comment, either at the beginning or at the end. And of course, you can speak on any matter of legislation. Any notes on council schedule will be followed by that public comment, and then we will adjourn. So, do we have a motion regarding the minutes? And I will note, for folks that didn't check their email, there was a slightly amended version of the minutes sent out this afternoon.
I move to approve the minutes from April 3, 2024, as amended earlier today.
Second?
Are there any questions about the amendments, or about the minutes? Great. Seeing as we're all here in person, this, we can just do a voice vote on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Abstentions? Great, that passes. Let's move on to reports from council members. We'll start on my left. Councilmember Assari?
Greetings, councilmembers. Just a very quick report, sort of following on how we discussed that we'd use report time at our deliberation session. We had a BEDC Executive Committee meeting last week, where we covered several topics, some of which I think are relevant, because they'll hopefully come down the pipe to us. But the first one, which is general organizational updates, I won't bore you with that. We spent a lot of time talking about economic development priorities, and the discussions focused on housing, infrastructure, workforce attraction, industry. And the BEDC is also planning ways to observe its 40th anniversary this year, something that I'm sure they'll tell us more about in the weeks to come. In terms of business retention and attraction, there's two major expansion projects that are underway, including Simtra, which we know about bringing something like 130 jobs. And there's also been five employer site visits in recent months, with more in the pipeline, which I think is pretty exciting. There was some conversation about infrastructure and planning, particularly the BEDC is funding and trying to organize a sanitary sewer and wastewater study that's just getting initiated. And then finally, there's a little bit of progress on the EDA application that we sent in with support. And so just as a reminder to all of us, that the BEDC is sort of, you know, helping coordinate our efforts here, may be coming back to council, asking for a very minimal amount of funds, should we get accepted into that sort of first stage of the creation of the EDA. And that is my update from this last week.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Quick report. I, you know, this year, we're trying something new so far with two regular sessions in the month, and one discussion session where we don't hear legislation or vote on anything. And I just want to say midway through the first month, I'm unsure of this, and I just want to bring that up. I feel like already, we have a lot of legislation that is in the pipeline, and either sort of delayed, or like, we can't hear it soon because we only have these two meetings. I also think this is going to lead to very long meetings in the future. So I, I'm not saying we should reconsider this, but I just want to say, like, I'm thinking about it, and thinking about maybe it might be something I want to change later. But also, two other things I think that we could do as, one, as council members, I think we can try really hard to draft our own legislation, because I think our staff is very overworked right now, and will continue to be overworked. So as much as we can, I would say draft your own legislation, write your own amendments, do a little bit of your own research, all that good stuff. But also, I am, of course, aware that folks up here, some of us, you know, don't think that there is time to do that based on the part-time work of this position. Also, I would urge our staff to, I'm not quite sure how this works, but if something isn't ready from a sponsor, whether it be one of us or someone else, to just say, this isn't ready yet, and that they need to work on it on their own, and bring it back to you later. I just, I feel protective, and want to make sure that you all aren't writing legislation for people who should have it kind of fully cooked on their own when they bring it to the packet. That's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Zulik?
No report.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Daley?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things that I wanted to say. The first one actually fits in very nicely with what Councilmember Stossberg was saying. I attended the Supporting Immigrants on Inauguration Day, Monday morning at the library. This was hosted by Bloomington Refugee Support Network. Exodus was also there, and El Centro, and it was just really, just a really nice opportunity to hear about what our community, what organizations in our community are doing to help support immigrants and refugees. A lot of faith groups were there, also talking about what their organizations are also doing. It was really, really heartening. And, you know, while a lot around that that's happening right now is obviously very sad and heartbreaking, this helped feel like maybe a pathway where we can try to help people. So if you are interested, I do encourage you to please reach out to these organizations, and just offer your support, and see what you can do to pitch in. It's just a good way to maybe spend some time. And then finally, I have a constituent meeting coming up on Tuesday, February 11, at 5:00 PM. This will be held at the Southwest Branch. Sorry, you were looking at me funny. I thought you were concerned. This will be held at the Southwest Branch of the Monroe County Public Library, in Meeting Room B. Thank you.
Thank you. Going down to the other end, Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, I do have a report. I wanted to follow up on a comment from member of the public at our last regular session, who shared concerns about obstruction of sidewalks from snow and ice removal, in particular noting the challenge with so-called monolithic sidewalks, when the, when there's no tree lawn between the sidewalk and the street, they immediately abut one another. An example of this is on South Walnut. And when those streets are plowed, it piles up lots of snow and ice onto the sidewalks, making it largely impossible or impractical for the property owners to clear it, which is their responsibility under Bloomington Code. But it's not really feasible. And so, no shortage of pictures of completely inaccessible pedestrian infrastructure, people waiting for buses in snowdrifts, et cetera. And so, you know, want to follow up about what we can do about it, to make sure we have an accessible, equitable, safe, you know, transportation system, even in times of heavy snowfall. We certainly do that for streets. And so, you know, all of our plans and goals and values kind of state that we should be doing that for all users, in fact, with priority for pedestrian, bicyclist, and transit users. I think also at that meeting, you know, several of my colleagues credited the city for a job well done on snow removal. I've done the same via email with staff. And I think, you know, these two things can both be true. We can have done a really good job, for the most part, with street snow removal, and also largely sidewalks, either as a community or as a city, but still, you know, be challenged in some areas. And this is still ongoing, I would say. So just a few examples. The north side of the Convention Center, for instance, is currently completely obstructed by snow and ice. That sidewalk, it's clearly not been plowed at any point. Similarly, the south side of the former Bunker and Robertson property, which is now owned by the RDC, clearly a city responsibility, not done. The Third Street Protected Bike Lane, the entire time since we've had snow, has been obstructed and blocked. We did manage to do the seven lines, so clearly that was planned for and acted upon. We can do this. It's not unachievable. It's just, you know, things are slipping through the cracks in enough places where it's clear that the status quo isn't really getting it done. And so I think, I've started working on legislation. I've let the administration know that. I wanted to let my colleagues know that, in case they would like to collaborate on an update to Bloomington Municipal Code 6.07, on snow and ice removal, to clarify responsibilities, and possibly change some as well. I think ideally, it would be a city responsibility to clear sidewalks of snow and ice. Some cities do that. And if we took our plans and values and stated goals at their face value, we probably would as well. I doubt there's political will for that. Obviously, that's a pretty serious commitment. So short of that, I think there are still things we could do. We could have a requirement that there is a map of all the city-owned properties that need to be removed, have snow removed from them, clarifying whose responsibility it is. Is it parks? Is it, you know, public works? Similarly, multi-use paths are a little bit ambiguous. They're not a sidewalk. Are they the city's responsibility to clear all multi-use paths in the city? How are we planning for protected bike lanes, et cetera? Requiring a report to the council at the next regular session, following snowfalls, you know, in excess of, for instance, an inch, would help me make sure we're getting attention to that, to shore up the gaps that remain in ensuring we have an accessible and safe and equitable transportation system for all users. And I think that the last one, again, is this monolithic sidewalk issue. It's really not reasonable to be imposing on property owners the responsibility to clear sidewalks when we're piling loads of snow and ice onto it, perhaps after they've already cleared it. So, we need to figure out how to solve that. Either not push snow and ice up onto the sidewalk, or if we do that, in the course of clearing snow and ice from streets, then the city should probably be responsible for clearing those sidewalks as well, in those limited cases. So, again, would invite collaboration on that. Hopefully, we can discuss it in a future deliberation meeting, and consider legislation within a few months.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Ruff?
No report. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Rallo?
No.
Councilmember Pete Mott Smith?
Yes, just briefly, the Waste Reduction District of Monroe County had its first meeting last Thursday for 2025. And we, the board voted to enter into new contract for the hauling of recyclables and waste, and for the processing of recycling materials with Rumki. We've had, for a long time, agreements with Republic Services, and both Republic and Rumki bid on this contract, and the Rumki proposal was the preferred one. So, we're moving ahead with those arrangements for new contract. And things are looking a little bit better for recyclable materials than five or six years ago. Starting in, I think, January of 2018, the markets were just tanked for recyclable materials. And now, with the new contract, we'll actually be getting some funds in return for cardboard and mixed paper. So, we won't just be paying for it. We'll also be getting some money back. So, things are looking up a little bit there. So that was my report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And I just have a quick Plan Commission report. Last week, there were actually two Plan Commission meetings. The regular session on Monday had three items of discussion. First, the Safe Streets for All amended plan, did get final approval from the Plan Commission. So that's kind of the last step in that process. There was also a Common Area Subdivision approved off of South Walnut Street Pike. And I actually noticed there have been a couple of different news stories about that. So maybe you guys have caught those. And then, lastly, the Convention Center actually had its first hearing for site plan approval last week. So, that has been moved on to second hearing in February. So I know that that's something that, I mean, we're talking about it later tonight. So it's something that's there, and so people want to, might want to tune in for that. I did not see anything dramatically different in terms of those plans than what was presented to us at that session that we had. I can't even quite remember when it was, maybe October, that it was an information session for council members. So, no, like, huge, huge changes from that, I don't believe. And then, on Thursday, there was a second Special Plan Commission meeting that just addressed the affordability incentive structure changes that we requested by resolution. I actually sponsored that resolution. And so, draft changes were presented by staff, and the commission discussed how to move forward, and what changes could be made. So, that is all moving forward, and that is my report. So, moving on in the agenda, reports from the mayor and city offices. My understanding is there isn't any. Is there anybody out there from the mayor and city offices who was expecting to give one? Great. Then we'll move right into council committee reports. Councilmember Pete Mott Smith?
Yes, thank you. I have a report, an annual report for 2024, the activities of the Special Committee on Council Processes, which was comprised of councilmembers Flaherty, Assari, Rallo, and myself. And there's a report, there's a written report in your packets, just to give you some highlights. So, we did complete a review of the language in municipal code about non-statutory commissions, so advisory commissions, and reviewed the language of their purpose and mission statements, and made sure that those were up to date. And we, you know, consulted with the staff liaisons and the commissions. So you'll be seeing Title II legislation come forward to incorporate those changes. We also talked about how boards and commissions could better contribute to the goals of the city, and how we can make better use of them, and not just have them kind of chug on on their own, but actually integrate them into our decision-making process more. And then, we, of course, were very happy that the, there's a new deputy clerk, Jennifer Crossley, who is going to be in charge of kind of organizing our boards and commissions and our onboarding and training. So that was a great, great news at our last meeting of the year. We did, of course, on this topic of city council meetings and how they're run, we did recommend that we hold three so-called consensus-building activities in the latter part of 2024, which we did. And I think it was a good exercise, in a couple of different formats, to have deliberation rather than just official discussion of legislation. So, we're looking forward to more of that this year. And then, we also talked a lot about other kind of ways that Title II is a little restrictive about how we conduct our business. And we're thinking that maybe we need to look at the process statements in Title II. And I believe Councilmember Assari has been working on that. And then, kind of the last topic we addressed last year was equity in city government, looking at really using an equity lens throughout government, not just with city council processes, but also processes in the administration, the executive branch. And we look forward to having more conversations with the mayor's office about really looking at all of our policies and our legislation through an equity lens, because we, of course, have stated many times in our planning documents, in our comprehensive plan, that that's one of our goals. So we need to actually follow through with that. So, in conclusion, we are still really busy. We still have things on the agenda we didn't get to last year. And so we're glad that we'll be continuing this year as a standing committee, or as a special committee, and potentially convert to a standing committee of the council. And I welcome the other members of the committee, if they have anything to add to the report, that of course, was shared with them. Yeah? Okay. Are there any questions on the report?
I don't see any hands up. Thank you, Councilmember Pete Mott Smith. I appreciate the details of that. And you guys were really busy last year. Really busy last year. So, thank you. Moving on, I believe the next thing on our agenda is reports from the public. So this is the first period for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. There is 20 minutes set aside for this period of public comment. So if anybody is interested in making a comment about something that is not on the agenda, can go ahead and make your way to the podium, and you will have, you'll need to sign in, and then you would have three minutes. If you're on Zoom and you wish to make a comment, you can do that by either sending a chat message to the host, or by raising your hand, and indicating that you are interested in making a comment. I don't see anybody moving in chambers right Is there anybody on Zoom that is interested in making a comment? Attorney Lehner or Kulak? Okay.
I don't see any hands raised at this time.
Okay. I don't know that I've ever had this many people at a meeting, and nobody wanted to speak during the general period of public comment. So, going once, going twice. All right. Moving on to appointments for boards and commissions. I believe that there are several different appointments for boards and commissions. So, who's up for that? Councilmember Zulik?
So, I'm just going to read all of Interview Committee C teams' recommendations for the Commission on Hispanic and Latino Affairs, to reappoint Reyes Javier Rosales to seat C2, and Raquel Anderson to seat C3. For the Arts Commission, to reappoint Suzanne Ryan Malamed to seat C3. And for the Commission on the Status of Children and Youth, to reappoint Erin Reynolds to seat C3.
Great. So, we have a motion for Interview Team C. So that was Hispanic and Latino Affairs, Arts Commission, Commission on the Status of Children and Youth, a total of one, two, three, four appointments. Does anybody have any questions on any of those appointments? I think we can do a voice vote on this one, too, right? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. And that motion passes. Thank you very much.
[inaudible]
Oh, go for it, Councilmember Zulik.
For the Capital Improvement Board, I recommend that we, or I move that we reappoint Doug Bruce to seat C1.
Second.
All right. We have a motion for the CIB. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Councilmember Flaherty?
I noticed this didn't appear under committee recommendations. So, was there a committee that considered this? Or look at their, someone to help explain the process for the recommendation here?
So, there is not an interview committee that is assigned the Capital Improvement Board. We did look at the applicants, and Mr. Bruce was the only person who had applied.
So, to kind of add to that, in the future, I think, I think that the CIB will get assigned to something, to one of the interview committees. That would be my intention, is to assign the CIB to an interview committee. And those will have to get shaken up a little bit, depending on what happens with the Transportation Commission. So, yeah. Other questions about this appointment, or comments? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Do we need, why don't we call the roll on that, please?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Nay.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Pete Mott Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
No.
And Assari?
Yes.
All right. That motion passes, 7-2. Thank you, guys. Any, who is next? Because we've got some more. So who, Councilmember Assari?
For Committee Team A, would like to, and I'll say them all, as Councilmember Zulik did, to reappoint Chris Hazel to seat C2 on the Animal Control Commission, to reappoint David Jennings to seat C4 of the Commission on Aging, and to appoint Rob Council to seat C3 of the same Commission on Aging. To, we'd also like to reappoint- To, we'd also like to reappoint Emma Williams to seat C1 for the Bloomington and Monroe County Human Rights Commission. And we would like to appoint, reappoint Diana Potta to seat C3 of the Housing Quality and Appeals Board.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second for the team A recommendations for Animal Care and Control, Commission on Aging, Human Rights Commission, and Housing Quality Appeals Board. Total of one, two, three, four, five seats. Any questions or comments on any of those? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Great, that motion passes. Thank you. Councilmembers Zulik?
Our motion?
Okay.
For the Historic Preservation Commission for mayoral appointments, I move that we reappoint Daniel Schlegel to seat M3, Jack Baker to seat M1, Melody Duzner to seat M5, I'm so sorry if I mispronounced that, and Jeremy Hacker to seat M6.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we've got a motion and a second for, to approve one, two, three, four seats that are mayoral appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission. And just kind of for the public's information, the Historic Preservation Commission is kind of an interesting commission. It's, I believe, the only one where council approves mayoral appointments to this particular body. Any questions, any comments on any of these appointments? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, I wanted to note that two of the recommended appointments, Jack Baker and Jeremy Hacker, are currently serving in council seats, which are advisory seats. So there's four council seats that are advisory members of the HPC. Those are a creation of local code. And then there are also nine mayoral seats. Those are, I believe, I'm not sure if the number is strictly required by state statute, but the, the structure of, of all mayoral seats for the voting members is a state statute-driven. And this is also not the first time this has happened. Ernesto Castaneda, who's also serving as a mayoral appointment currently, started as a council appointment. And I'm just raising this because, you know, I think we should think about that and whether that means something about the structure. And, and, you know, I don't know. I guess I have mixed feelings about whether the advisory seats from the council are warranted, given that the council approves or has to approve all of the mayoral seats are ready. So I would imagine the motivation had to do with, you know, having more council-appointed involvement in the HPC. But I think we should think about that, that analysis. And just noting that, yeah, we're, we put a lot more time, I think, into reviewing applicants, making recommendations. It's a lot more staff and city time generally, because we have to notice meetings, get together, interview people, have clerk staff on hand versus, you know, the mayor and the staff liaison sort of making a determination about who to recommend. So from, even from a resourcing standpoint, I just think if there's like this repeated phenomenon of council appointing people and then those moving to mayoral seats, I'm not sure that's the, you know, the best structure. So that's all, just something to think about for the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have a comment about the HPC appointments? Okay, I'll just say I appreciate that, I appreciate the slate of appointments from, from the mayor, so. We'll go to voice vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Great, that motion passes. Do we have any other appointments? I think that we got them all. Wonderful. Let me head back to my agenda now. We should be on to legislation for first readings.
I move ordinance 2025-03 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Great, it's been moved and seconded for the clerk to read ordinance 2025-03 by title and synopsis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-03, an ordinance to amend ordinance 2024-20 that fix the salaries of appointed officers, non-union and APSME employees for all of the departments for the city, of the city of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana for the year 2025. The synopsis is this ordinance amends ordinance 2024-20, which fix the salaries of appointed officers, non-union and APSME employees for the year 2025. The amendment comes at the request of the Human Resources Department to reflect changes to several non-union positions within the city.
Great, thank you.
I move ordinance 2025-04 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to introduce ordinance 2025-04. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you, that motion passes. Will the clerk please read?
2025-04, to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel. And the synopsis is this ordinance amends Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code, Administration and Personnel, to remove the Traffic Commission, Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Commission, and Parking Commission, and establish a new nine-member Transportation Commission. The Transportation Commission will make recommendations on relevant transportation and parking sections of the Bloomington Municipal Code, review all transportation-related projects, and propose policies that promote safe, equitable, and sustainable transportation and parking policies and decisions. Additionally, this ordinance amends Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code, Vehicles and Traffic, to replace references of the Traffic Commission, Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Commission, and Parking Commission, with references to the Transportation Commission.
Thank you.
I move appropriation, oh, sorry. I move appropriation ordinance 2025-01 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to introduce appropriation ordinance 2025-01. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation ordinance 2025-01 to additionally appropriate from the General Fund for the Downtown Outreach Grant Program. The synopsis is this appropriation ordinance funds the Downtown Outreach Grant Program in the General Fund, Community and Family Resources Department for the year 2025 for $250,000.
Great, thank you. Those three items for legislation will have a second reading on February 5th, so that is, I believe, two weeks from this evening. Now we will move on to legislation for second readings and resolutions.
I move ordinance 2025-01 be read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second. It's been moved to introduce and read ordinance 2025-01. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2025-01 to amend the district ordinance and preliminary plan of a 3.2-acre planned unit development, PUD, the Curry PUD, in order to amend the workforce housing contribution regarding 105 South Pete Ellis Drive, SPCW Bloomington JV LLC petitioner. The synopsis is ordinance 2025-01 would amend the district ordinance and preliminary plan for the Curry PUD to allow the workforce housing commitment to be met through a payment to the Housing Development Fund instead of through the inclusion of workforce housing units onsite.
Great, thank you. And it looks like we have, oh...
2025-01 be adopted.
Second. Great, I forgot that stage. It's the first time I've had to do that. It looks like we have Jackie Scanlon here from Planning and Transportation to present for us.
Name Jackie Scanlon, Development Services Manager, Planning and Transportation. All right, hold on just a sec. Okay, so we are looking at a PUD amendment for the PUD that's located at Pete Ellis and Longview. You can see here on the east side of town. So the property is about 3.2 acres. It contains one building you can see here on the aerial, zone plan unit development, part of the Curry PUD. The comprehensive plan designation is Regional Activity Center, and it's just on the edge of the focus area related to the new hospital and the bypass. And again, was recently developed through the PUD. The proposal tonight is to amend the rules of the PUD to allow for payment in lieu of workforce housing units onsite. So currently, the PUD requires that workforce housing comprising of 15% of the unit bedroom count, which is 52 bedrooms, be provided onsite. And the petitioner is proposing to get rid of that amendment, or get rid of that commitment and have a new commitment that will require $20,000 per bedroom for the same percentage bedroom count to go toward the fund with the city that helps the affordable housing initiatives of the, of the mayor's office. And that amount will be $1,040,000. So again, as I said, this property just cuts the corner of one of the focus areas, the one related to the new hospital development. That was discussed when the PUD was created, as housing in that area can help support that large use. Here is just a brief screen of the PUD district intent, I'm sure everyone is familiar with it. This is the PUD district intent from when this PUD was approved. So the regulations you are reviewing this PUD under are not the regulations in the current code, but the regulations from the code when this was approved in 2019, before the large UDO update. So the proposed PUD amendment to amend and allow for payment in lieu does not change the intent of the PUD. The plan still provides needed addition of housing stock in general, which is a clear desire of the comprehensive plan. The Plan Commission heard this petition at its December 9th hearing and voted six to one to send the petition to a common council with a positive recommendation with the following conditions. PUD final plan approval delegated to the Planning and Transportation Department staff if required. And number two, the petitioner will record the proposed payment in lieu zoning commitment approved by the Housing and Neighborhood Development Department within four weeks of approval of the PUD amendment. And number three, the petitioner will honor the existing leases of the 25 units that currently exist from the workforce housing commitment, and the petitioner will renew those leases upon request by those specific tenants as long as they continue to qualify. So to clarify, they are supposed to have 52. They have, in the, this was in your staff report as well, but they state that they have had a hard time filling them. And so currently, they only, at the time of Plan Commission, only had 25 units that were full, that were meeting the workforce housing, affordable housing commitment. So they have agreed to keep those 25 for some period of time. I wanted to clarify, so what this means, we have worked with the petitioner on an agreement that gets rid of the previous zoning commitment and acknowledges that a new zoning commitment is coming forth, as well as a zoning commitment draft, which I think was in your packet, but I'm not sure. And so the payment in lieu agreement and termination of zoning commitment that was in your packet, it's still identical. We added one section between three and four in order to acknowledge that the new Plan Commission recommendation also requires a zoning commitment that has to be approved by hand. And I can answer any questions.
Is there anybody here from the petitioner or anybody on, a representative of the petitioner online who would like to speak?
Good evening, council members. My name is Tom Jason. I'm representative of SPCW Bloomington JV LLC, the petitioner. With me today is our counsel, Bill Beggs. And we appreciate the opportunity to discuss our proposal to pay a fee in lieu and hope to provide some additional context to our request and our experience in the workforce housing program. So the property opened in August 2023, and while we had believed we'd be successful in leasing these units up to our commitment provided up to the 100 and 120% AMI levels, and were committed to doing so, a majority of the units have sat vacant since we opened. And despite our best efforts in calendar year 2023, we only leased 17 of the 52 units. And at the time of the Plan Commission meeting on December 9, '24, had only leased 25 of the 52 units. And in November '23, we discussed with Hand different means and methods that we could try and boost our occupancy, and one of those items was to reduce our rents. Largely, we were targeting the 100, 120% AMI levels, and we reduced those down a majority to the 80%, and still struggled to lease any meaningful number of units. And so in 2024, we had a total of only 25 leads, or, sorry, 35 leads, and the average AMI of those leads was 53%, which demonstrates that the greatest need is that lower AMIs that we're hopeful the fee in lieu could provide for. And in addition to dropping rents, we feel that we've deployed extensive marketing efforts. And we don't claim that these have been perfect, but have made continual efforts to improve and refine and educate both ourselves and our onsite team to better understand the program and how we can be successful. And these are above and beyond what's typical for our market rate units. And we have a fully developed marketing plan that is specific to the workforce housing units, which has added focus to both our online and offline marketing campaigns, the content, referral programs, and so, and so forth. I'm just gonna list a few of the items that we've done in, in an effort to just get our name out there, boost traffic, and try and sign leases. We've had several community partnerships and preferred employer discounts with local businesses where fees are waived. We've done business outreach to over 100 local businesses, things like joining the Chamber of Commerce and having booths and business expos at housing events. We have a resident referral program. Gone as far as radio advertising and a presentation with a local Realtor office where 70 Realtors were present, where we informed them about the workforce housing program and what our property offered. Continually refining our internet ad and geo-fencing campaigns and worked with Hand to get our project on the city website. And currently, it's one of the first links you see when you search workforce housing in Bloomington, Indiana. And so while it's an iterative process, we are consistently working to improve our marketing and outreach, but continue to have difficulty in finding sustained demand from qualified and interested candidates. The project team has been in frequent communication with the Housing and Neighborhood Development Department to discuss and work through these challenges, as well as to brainstorm some of those different items that we could deploy to try and boost occupancy. Director Killian Hansen and Ms. LaFontaine have been extremely helpful, and we appreciate all the time and effort that they've put into the programs as well as into our individual project. Our proposed modification to pay a fee in lieu is a product of our experience in the program and those discussions with Hand. We appreciate their support for this request and all the dialogue that they've offered over the last two or three years. And we truly believe that we would be successful in the program, and we're committed to doing so, but believe that there will be challenges in sustaining demand currently and into the future. And so we believe that the fee in lieu may be the best option for our project to participate in the city's workforce housing initiatives. And our hope is that the fee in lieu, coupled with the project honoring the 25 existing workforce housing tenants and giving them the opportunity to renew as long as they continue to qualify, will be a better way for this project to meet the needs of the community than the onsite units are providing. We appreciate your consideration and are happy to answer any questions today.
Thank you. Questions from council members? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Staff, thank you so much. Do we know how other apartment complexes are doing in terms of renting workforce housing? I was trying to look up the one that is off of 17th Street. It's at Crescent and 17th. I just don't know the name of it. Do we, do we know how they're doing?
But, yes, she may know, or Ms. Fontaine, Fontaine is here as well.
Yes, oh, is that what it's called, Union at Crescent? Yes. Do we, like...
Could, could, could you identify yourself?
I'm Stephanie LaFontaine. I'm the Affordable Housing Program Manager with Housing and Neighborhood Development. So there's only certain, there's different housing programs in different facilities, complexes around the city. Union at Crescent is not a workforce housing, affordable housing project there. They have affordable units, they are not workforce housing. What we're talking about tonight is workforce housing.
Okay, sorry, I was just giving that as an example, but...
twenty-three, and that was a balance of about two hundred and fifteen units, which is the largest balance of units coming onboard. And there are difficulties with two of the three properties in particular. The third one only has fifteen units, and we've been monitoring them as well, and there's challenges all the way around. Part of the problem is our wages are much lower in Bloomington. Typically, eighty to one-twenty is what other communities have successfully done workforce housing. We know that Bloomington has lower wages and higher rents than other communities. So again, we've had discussions about lowering the AMIs that are required for workforce housing. So this project illustrates that need. We've talked about on an ongoing basis with council and planning and internally here at the city, particularly in hand. So we, I'm supportive of this ordinance going forward. I think it would be a win-win in being able to maintain the twenty-five units for the people that are in them, and also give a significant amount of money to the Housing Development Fund to develop truly affordable housing at eighty percent and lower AMIs.
Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, and this may be for Ms. LaFontaine again, or Ms. Killian Hansen. So the, the one million forty thousand dollars goes into the Housing Development Fund. How, how is that fund spent? Who makes the decisions and help?
The decisions are made internally by hand, and that fund, all the funds are local, used within the city limits and prioritize development, creation, or maintenance of affordable housing. And we're targeting, you know, eighty percent and below. The fund can go up to a hundred and twenty and under, but right now, we're trying to focus on those lower AMIs because that's where the greatest need is.
Can you give one or two examples of recent projects supported by that fund?
Yeah, we helped an owner purchase, I think it was six or seven, units that are being leased to veterans who are low income. And if there aren't veterans, then they're to be leased to other people who are low income if they can't fill them with veterans. That's one example. Other funds were used to help maintain permanent supportive housing at the rise that targets people with domestic violence or fleeing, you know, sexual trafficking. So again, it's targeting a very low-income population. Most of those people are sixty percent or lower and would be homeless on the street without those services available for housing them.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Councilmember Flaherty?
A couple, but hopefully some of them are quick. One was the mention of the twenty-five units that will be preserved, I think, for a period of time was referenced. Do we, is that an ongoing commitment for a long period of time or for like a kind of just the stability of the people currently in those units? Like, what's the detail of that commitment?
So Jackie Scanlon Development Services Manager, the condition is for, and this will be in the zoning commitment, to honor the existing leases of the twenty-five units that currently exist from the workforce housing commitment and renew those leases upon request by those specific tenants as long as they continue to qualify. So the twenty-five renters, as long as they qualify, can continue to rent, and that is spelled out in the agreement as well.
Thank you. And normally, when we have these types of in, like, on property, affordable units, they're kind of in perpetuity, right? Like, it's like, almost like a ninety-nine-year, like, lease commitment or deed commitment?
Yes, so the zoning commitments put in place under the last administration, almost all were for ninety-nine years.
Okay, I do have one more follow-up that's related, but I can hold it if, is it okay?
If it's related, I, go ahead.
It is, which is that it was mentioned in the packet that the, the proposed payment in lieu figure is in line with current calculations. I think twenty thousand dollars per bedroom was what was referenced. Imagining, for instance, we want to buy down market rents for folks at fifty percent AMI, you know, maybe, I'm guessing that's gonna be several thousand dollars a year or more per bedroom, and so maybe we get three, four, or five, eight years, you know, out of, per bedroom, out of that amount we're bringing in versus ninety-nine years or ninety years of a workforce unit commitment. And so I'm trying, like, could someone speak to that trade-off, I guess? Is my logic there sound? It might be the right decision. I'm not saying this, you know, isn't justified, but it seems to me like a, despite being a relatively high-dollar figure, of course, that the actual impact over a decadal, multi-decadal, you know, time scale is maybe not quite as great as the current commitment.
Sure, I think Director Killian Hansen, she just came on and then went back off, so I don't know if she was wanting to respond to that question on the trade-off for changing units for payment in lieu.
Hi. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I want to respond to a couple of things that were discussed. So Matt, I think you're, you're, you're right that, you know, one-time payment in lieu is not necessarily greater. However, we do have these vacant units, and this is definitely the lesser of two evils at this point. For twenty twenty-five, we have raised the payment in lieu dollar amount to thirty thousand dollars per unit, and I am trying together a task force right now to address this. I think that we need to look at these incentives and revise them to make them more in line to these lifetime units. But I'm not sure that the workforce housing method is working citywide at this point, especially when we're talking about student-centric complexes. In regards to how the Housing Development Fund is used, if you will remember from my budget presentation, three of the pilot programs that were starting in twenty twenty-five, the TBRA, the eviction prevention, and also the interest rate buy-down, are all being funded from Housing Development Fund. So TBRA is tenant-based rental assistance, much like workforce housing units. This will provide our ability to truly get unaffordable rents down. It can also pay for a number of things to help some of these tenants truly stay housed. So in addition, historically, Housing Development Fund has only been around since twenty seventeen. There have been a number of large multifamily complexes that either got a low percent forgivable loan or just a grant. And then the Housing Development Fund has also funded our, I think you guys are aware of the down payment and closing cost assistance, that's the equity share that comes from Housing Development Fund as well. So these are all really good programs to help supplement unaffordable rents, to help create new affordable units. But I do think that we need to look a little bit harder at these incentives and make sure that they are what we need, but right now is not the time for this particular complex while we have vacant units sitting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from council members? Councilmember Ari?
Thank you so much. And this sort of following on from Councilmember Flaherty's question, because that was the question I was going to ask, but could we discuss a little bit what the alternatives are? I mean, is it, is it literally that our choice is, I mean, what are our alternatives? What are we faced with here as a choice?
Sure, so this is a PUD amendment, so they have a planned unit development that you all approved. It has regulations. They have to follow those regulations if you don't agree to amend the PUD. So they have an existing zoning commitment. We could try to hold them to that. The problem with this zoning commitment, I would say, is that it was written before the affordable housing incentives were codified. So it was written in a way to try to mimic what we thought was coming, but I do think that Hand, Staff, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, find it difficult to enforce. It doesn't have a lot of like, hey, if the fifty-two aren't full, then...
And should, I should clarify a little, and this, thank you so much, my, more so what I mean is, are there other tools available to us to, to address this pain point for the petitioner? Or is the only tool that, that exists in our toolkit, this of payment in lieu?
Oh, yes, okay. So this would maybe be a question for legal or your attorney, but I think because they're requesting this one specific thing at this time, you can only answer yes or no to this item. But yes, there may be other ways to modify the requirement.
Thank you. Other questions from council members? Councilmember Beralo?
Is the petitioner in compliance with all other conditions of approval or, or code?
Yes, for this, yes.
Okay.
Where they are done with the property, and I believe they are either completely done with occupancy, I could look it up, or just waiting for some final landscaping approval in the spring.
Thank you.
Well, I have one, and it's for the petitioner. Are all of your other units occupied that are not in the workforce housing?
We're about ninety-five percent occupied on the balance.
So at this point, I, I think that this one, I think I want to go to public comment on this right now. There, I do want to bring up that there is an amendment in our packet right now, and my understanding is that that amendment might need to be amended in terms of making sure that all of those pieces of that, of those contracts are in agreement between all of the attorneys involved in this. Attorney Lehner, is that correct?
Yes, I can speak to that for a moment. You're correct, there is an amendment, and there also is a reasonable condition that attaches the proposed zoning commitment, and there are some final edits to that zoning commitment under discussion, even as of today. My suggestion would be for, for staff and the attorneys to have some additional time to, to properly address those edits, as opposed to rushing to do a further amendment today. As a result, council could have discussion tonight and take public comment on this matter, and then postpone the, the matter to the February fifth meeting. I've discussed that with the petitioner's attorney today, in fact.
Okay, great, thank you. So keeping that in mind right now, are there, we'll move to public comment. Are there members of the public who wish to give input on this matter of this PUD amendment? If so, if you could make your way to the podium, you would have three minutes to make a comment. And if you're online right now, you can go ahead and use the reactions tab to raise your hand to indicate that you would like to say something, or you can send a chat message to the host. Any public comment takers today? You guys are real quiet. Is there anybody on Zoom?
There has raised hands on Zoom.
Okay, so seeing no public comments and understanding that, does anybody have any questions, first of all, follow-ups in terms of either the petition itself or what our attorney mentioned about the contract stuff? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, thank you. I have a question for the petitioner about the difference in rent between your market rate units and these units that are the workforce commitment. You know, a range or a ballpark, either on a per-bedroom or per-unit basis, would be helpful, either monthly, annually, whatever.
So on a studio bedroom, I guess, let me backtrack, in this zoning commitment, all of the workforce housing units are either studio or one-bedroom units, so I'll just reference those. On a studio unit, the rent is approximately thirteen hundred dollars a month for a market rate unit, and that compares to a, sorry, let me check my notes, a hundred twenty percent AMI studio would be eleven eighty-eight, and then an eighty percent AMI studio would be eight seventeen. So depending on the AMI level, it's a five hundred to two hundred dollar delta. Now, on the one-bedrooms, our market rate is approximately fourteen fifty, which is below the hundred twenty percent one-bedroom AMI rate, that's fifteen eighty-three, and then a one-bedroom at eighty percent is nine fifty-seven. So again, in the realm of three, four, five hundred dollar per month difference.
Did I hear you correctly, though? Thank you. Did I hear you correctly that your market rate units for the one-bedroom are less than the hundred and twenty percent AMI level?
Yeah, I was correct.
So isn't that the commitment? Is, is at one-twenty percent AMI, so your market rate units are already satisfying?
There are other requirements that individuals have to meet in order to lease the workforce housing units, and so part of our challenge has been finding individuals that check all those boxes. So it's easier for us to sign a market rate unit without some of those restrictions. And the success we have had where individuals are meeting the workforce housing qualifications have been largely at the eighty percent AMI level or lower.
Okay, thank you.
Other follow-up questions? Councilmember Rosenberg?
Just wondering, okay, folks who have trouble paying rent do best with roommates. So I guess, like, why are they one-bedrooms in studios that are the workforce housing?
So that, the, the history of the workforce housing commitment is largely negotiated by a previous developer before we took over, and, and the final version that was agreed to included just studios and one-bedroom units. Not certain as to why outside of what made economic sense at the time to commit to. And so we have not been able to move the units around or explore what the impact of shifting the workforce housing units by unit types might be, because we're restricted to the studios and one-beds per the commitment.
Okay, thank you. And then if someone who meets the AMI requirements comes in for a one-bedroom, do they pay the fourteen fifty or do, market rate, or do they pay the, was it fifteen hundred something?
No, they would pay the lesser of that. I think the guideline in, in that instance, I don't think a market or workforce housing unit can be more than eighty-five percent of the market rate unit. So it gets adjusted by that individual's income, so they're at eighty percent, the eighty percent rate.
Okay, are you saying there's not a scenario where someone who is qualifying for a workforce unit is paying more than market rate?
There would be, there would not be any instances of that, no.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions before Councilmember Flaherty takes another round? Great, go for it, Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. So this, we had some, some remarks from Director Killian Hansen earlier that were, I think, helpful, and also note that we have legislation coming with regard to changing the affordability incentives in the UDO and having more kind of stratification and also lower, you know, deeper affordability as part of that. And I definitely appreciate the petitioner sharing their efforts to, I think, go above and beyond what their commitments are to rent at eighty percent AMI in some cases. And I guess my, the question I have is rather, had we considered instead of the payment in lieu, simply modifying the commitment where we reduce the total number of units that are required, say, from fifty-two to twenty-five, but require deeper affordability? So if the economic trade-off is, is similar to what the original commitment was, but you're having trouble at a hundred percent AMI, instead getting fewer units down at eighty or seventy percent AMI, was, was that option explored with, with Hand or, or others? Can you speak to that, please?
I don't think we discussed that option directly with Hand. We certainly contemplated it internally and contemplated what the right number of units to keep onsite may be. Through our experience, we had... Through our experience, we had difficulty leasing 100, 120% levels. We had a boost in occupancy by working with hand, and were able to qualify some individuals under the 80% level. But our, of the 25 we signed at the time of the plane commission meeting, only seven of them fell between 80 and 120%. So we just feel that there would be challenges in sustaining demand at those workforce housing rates, and that the fee in lieu for all 52 of the units, coupled with providing our current tenants the ability to renew, as long as they continue to qualify, would be the best path forward.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I kind of have a follow-up on that, actually, in terms of thinking about other things, and Councilmember Assari mentioned that concept too, and Councilmember Rosenbarger may have also mentioned it in terms of the two bedrooms instead of the one bedroom. So has there been any consideration of just transitioning how some of those are allocated instead of all one bedrooms and studios to include some two bedrooms? Is that something that the contract, in theory, could allow for in terms of, you know, if we're amending a contract?
I believe it would have to go through the same process to amend it, and so we focused on the fee in lieu proposal and not reallocating the units at this time. But I think it would have to go through the same plane commission and council approvals.
Okay, thank you. I think I'm at the point where I would entertain a motion to postpone if somebody wanted to do that.
I move to postpone ordinance 2025-01 until our next regularly scheduled session on February 5th, 2025.
This is a motion that is amendable and debatable. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about postponing? I am not sure, yep, I am not sure if we have to call the roll on a motion to postpone, or if we can do it by voice vote? And do we need to go to public comment on that? I don't think that we do. Councilmember Flaherty, do you know if we have to do this by roll call? Well, let's do it by roll call, just in case. How about that? So, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Ruff?
Well, whether, if we don't go to the public for any comment, is there any need to offer the petitioner a final statement of any kind before we actually postpone or vote to postpone?
Postponing, are you good with postponing?
I just have a quick question, if that's all right. Is the reason to postpone to work through some of the commitment documents to make sure those are all teed up?
That's my, that's our understanding from our attorney, yes.
Yeah, we're good to postpone.
Other questions like that, then, before the clerk please calls the roll? Great. Clerk McDowell, you're up.
Councilmember Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Pete Mont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Daly?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. That motion to postpone until February 5th passes with a vote of 9-0, so we will talk about that again on the 5th.
I move ordinance 2025-02 be read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Second.
Thank you. It's been moved to have the clerk introduce ordinance 2025-02. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Great. Will the clerk please read?
Give me one second. Ordinance 2025-02, an ordinance establishing the outdoor dining program in the downtown corridor. The synopsis is ordinance 25, 2025-02 establishes the outdoor dining program for the use of parklets, also known as streeteries, as additional seating space and suspends certain portion of the Bloomington Municipal Code in order to facilitate the program. The program is authorized to continue through December 31st, 2028.
Thank you.
I move ordinance 2025-02 be adopted. Second.
Thank you. There is also an amendment on this one. Do we want to move the amendment before the presentation, or do we want?
I think you can do it by.
Yeah.
I would like to move Amendment 1 to ordinance 25-02.
Second.
Great. So who wants to present Amendment 1 first? Do we want to do staff or Councilmember Rosenbarger?
I'll just give a quick, I'm thinking, it makes sense, actually, but Amendment 1 is basically a repeal and replace, so it's just made tiny changes throughout the entire amendment to allow for Kirkwood conversion, similar to what we did in years previous to 2024. And it just, I worked with Director Cooper Smith on this, and we basically just made a lot of little additions and deletions from the original ordinance to incorporate a few things, like loading zones being suspended on Kirkwood, and adding in the minimum and maximum fees for businesses participating on Kirkwood. So I think that's enough for right now. And, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. If staff wants to go ahead, that would be great.
Sure. Hi, everyone. Jane Cooper, oh.
Sorry, I have a question. Is this the amendment that's co-sponsored by Councilmember Assari?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Jane Cooper Smith, Director of Economic and Sustainable Development for the city. I'm here along with Chaz Mottinger, Special Projects Manager for ESD. I'm happy to be spending this evening with you all indoors, thinking about times a few months from now when we'll be a lot warmer and hanging out outside. So I have a slide deck that offers an overview of the program, and I'd like to leave most of our time for questions. Oh, if I can get it. Where do I, where do I aim, Ash? Okay, there we go. All right. As you know, the outdoor dining program was indispensable as a response to COVID-19. The program was introduced in 2020 and allowed this community to socialize when it had been isolated. And when we were spending a lot of time in outdoor spaces, it allowed for an alternate use of one of our primary thoroughfares. It offered a respite for users and a lifeline for businesses. The program has two components, parklets and outdoor dining. Staff's initial recommendation for 2025 was to extend only the parklet program for the next three years. Given the proposed amendment to the legislation, we will talk about both the parklet and Kirkwood conversion programs this year. We call it a conversion program because we're converting the space that was, is typically used by vehicle, vehicular traffic to pedestrian traffic, so we try to think of it that way instead of a closure. But if I say closure, I mean the same thing. So this photo shows one of the original parklets from 2020. Since its first year, staff has made incremental improvements to the look, safety, and access of parklets, and is working to identify alternative barrier materials that would meet, and maybe even improve, safety for the parklets. Since 2020, staff has focused on incremental improvements, including accessibility and beautification of parklets, in spite of the requirements of the orange jersey barriers. This photo shows a collaboration between a local artist and the orbit room. So initially, the parklets were street-level and had ramps to try to meet that ADA requirement, but now, the majority of the parklets have raised platforms, so they're fully accessible, which is great. The parklet program guidelines have already been approved by the Board of Public Works, and if approved by council this evening, whichever ordinance, or version of the ordinance, this program would be ready for the application So eight city departments collaborated on this and had input, Economic and Sustainable Development, Planning and Transportation, Engineering, Public Works, Fire, Police, Community and Family Resources Department, and Legal Department. We also worked with County Building Commissioner Bobby LaRue, who had input into the 2025 parklet guidelines. The program is implemented and managed by Chaz Mottinger in ESD, Michael Schermus, Special Projects Coordinator in CFRD, Mike Stewart, Transportation Technician in Engineering. Mr. Schermus and Mr. Stewart are instrumental to the program. We've also had a great deal of support from the crews, street crews and public works, who install and remove barriers and bollards, and the Bloomington Fire Department, who fill and drain the orange jersey barriers. So thanks to all of these teammates who get this work done. This, the Kirkwood conversion was implemented from 2020 to 2023. It typically comprised, or it may have entirely comprised, two and a half blocks, specifically the 100, 400, and 500 blocks of Kirkwood. There is consensus among business owners, staff, and council members, that there is a need for predictability in this overall program. This Google photo highlights in yellow the blocks that have been closed in the past. In the course of the summer and fall, special events close additional blocks of Kirkwood, and programming often overlaps between the newly closed blocks and the extant Kirkwood conversion blocks. This photo shows some of the parkland investments made at Farm and Uptown. So when the conversion program didn't happen in 2024, they had to shift their strategy. So this is just an example to say, the businesses who were participating, participating had to make additional investments for 2024. This photo, okay, the next few photos show the closure at a range of activity levels. So this is the 500 block near the sample gates on a pretty quiet day. I guess the text block is kind of covering up the screen, but so this is, this is low activity. That's what we look like at low activity. This photo shows the same block during a fairly active or relatively active sunset. This photo shows the 200 block during Grand Faloon, one of the busiest summer festivals in Bloomington. And this amazing photo looks toward Kirkwood from North Grant during Pride Fest, I think it was two years ago. So it's just packed. The initial staff recommendation for 2025 to 2028 was to implement parklets only. Staff considered a variety of factors, specifically public safety, equitable access to the public right-of-way, and to business resources, and upcoming construction projects. We didn't specifically consider the future use for the 2025 program. That means, while we may have had in mind that there will be a planning process and a future version of Kirkwood that doesn't look like it does right now, we, we weren't recommending a pause on the conversion because we will engage in this process, but we, yeah, I guess I just wanted to separate those two things. Yes, rather, we recommended a three-year time limit, which we think just places nice, a nice pressure on this interim program while we engage in the longer-term planning and implementation of the, of the future of Kirkwood. So, all that said, we received significant feedback from businesses and council members, and with that, we sent a survey out to 50 businesses along Kirkwood Avenue between Walnut and Indiana. Of the 22 respondents, granted, we did this last week, so that we have 22 responses is great. It obviously should have been done earlier, and we should try to be more complete. So of the 22 respondents, 50% support a full block closure to vehicular traffic, 40.9% support parklets only, and 9.1% do not support any outdoor dining program. Of the survey respondents, I'll say, or not of the people who responded, but rather the people who didn't respond, I think there is some general survey fatigue among business owners, but specifically for the non-supporters of the program. They feel pretty issued by the process, I think. So with them not responding, or whoever did respond, this percentage looks really similar to what it's looked like over the years. Respondents support a seasonal program. This survey said April it was a holdover from when we created it in the fall. 27.3% of respondents experienced an increase in foot traffic, and 36.4% of the respondents indicate that business revenue has increased due to the program. And then this photo, I think, is interesting. It shows service industry workers taking a moment during a service day, but what it also shows is there are, again, additional investments being made by the businesses for short-term rental, like tent rental, which is often involved during major weekends like graduation and Mother's Day. So I keep showing Uptown photos, but these tents are up and down Kirkwood during graduation weekend. Additional feedback from businesses is split along the 50/50 for and against line, with supporters requesting more consistency, better activation, and long-term planning, and detractors believe it is inherently unfair, doesn't represent our community well, and isn't used enough to justify the closure. Kirkwood remains an incredible opportunity in the heart of Bloomington, and because Kirkwood is a, quote, "highest priority corridor" in the Safe Streets for All Action Plan, it means that staff is in the process of evaluating this corridor against its peer highest priority corridors. And I think those are listed here, College and Walnut, Third, Fourth, and South Walnut Street. Planning and transportation plans to begin analysis and public outreach on Kirkwood no later than 2026, but they are hopeful that it could begin in 2025, if it's on the early side. So this sort of summarizes the current recommendation where we are now. The program remains complex and somewhat contentious, and for this reason, we appreciate the time and consideration that staff, council, businesses, and community partners are investing in it, specifically CMs or council members, Rosenbarger and Assari. We want to move forward in the best way possible to evolve our downtown corridor in a way that magnetizes residents, neighbors, and visitors. And then I'll just say again, this slide kind of shows that we're really just, at this point, trying to provide you all with the most information so that you can make a great decision about how to move forward with this program. From city staff's perspective, we made an initial judgment call on recommending to not pursue the Kirkwood closure, but we think there are multiple ways forward that can be successful. And I'd be happy to take questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you for your presentation, Director Cooper Smith. Were there any notices of violations that were given to any of the participating businesses in the past year?
Miss Mottinger will help answer this question.
Hello, Chaz Mottinger, Special Projects Manager, Economic and Sustainable Development, City of Bloomington. No, not necessarily. With Michael Schermus and Mike Stewart, who is also here, we implement the program, and over the past few years since we've been in charge of it, when people violate something with accessibility, we've worked with them to correct it. So it has ended up that no one's actually, if they're, violations is a strong word, if they've had issues with it, we've worked with them to correct the issues of accessibility, or whatever it may be.
Were those violations, were they, were they complaint-driven? Did someone have a problem with accessibility and report it, or, or do your staff make sure that they're in compliance with the code?
That, the latter. We make sure they're in compliance. So we started last year with the parklets to better assess what the parklets look like, and we would do that moving forward, regardless of what happens with any conversion or parklets. We would continue to make sure that there's a standard of accessibility, code is met as well. There was a hiccup with one of the, the building codes for one of the decks, but that was resolved with the County Building Commissioner. So as I said, it's, it's usually, from what I can remember, and I don't know 100% over the course of the last half, I wasn't here in 2021, so that I'm unaware. But since 2022, we've resolved everything with the businesses, and that's been nice. Thank you.
Thank you. I have another question, but I could, I can wait.
Okay. Other round one questions? Councilmember Pete Mont Smith?
Yes, this is like, maybe a legal question, but, so I'm reading the amendment, and it says that in Section 2, the program shall operate annually from March through November, So does this not allow, like, what if we have a particularly long winter or a particularly early winter? I mean, this says it shall run from March through November. Does that give any leeway for staff to say, no, we're gonna stop on Halloween, or?
I can, or you can? I think this is what we were just talking about, right? Right, so the, the ordinance really sets the stage, and then the program guidelines implement the specifics of the program. So the program guidelines will establish the date every year. And they, so in that way, the subordinate, their, the ordinance is subordinate. It's just broader.
So from my understanding, this amendment would basically say that the council, it says in Section 1 and Section 2, we were actually just talking about this before. So it says the conversion shall be from these blocks and operate each year pursuant to the program guidelines. It also says it shall operate annually from, you know, March through November with specific dates to be set by city staff. It's basically a deference question. So it, it establishes the baseline of this is when the program is going to be happening. But the specifics, the nitty-gritty, is up to staff. So that staff doesn't have to continually come back to council for small, small changes. But so that the council approves the program that it wishes to approve. Does that make sense?
Yes, if that's, I appreciate your legal interpretation there. And I think the sponsors, the cosponsors wanted to respond.
Tent here was, was to establish, to permit the program. So we're saying we allow this indefinitely, right? So they don't have to keep coming back to ask for the closure. But then for, to defer to the executive branch to, you know, execute it well, and then some cool design that they'll sort of collaborate with us on throughout the year.
Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Working with E S D and business owners, what we wanted to, it's kind of walking a fine line of predictability for business owners so that they, like, know what months the program will take place. So the original ordinance said, did not cite any months, and that just dates would be set. But it is nice for business owners to know, like, it is March through November. Also, it does say in that same section that council can extend, I think, or decrease. It might not say, right, it says that it can come back to council, like, if it needs to change. But I get that would be in code, but I think we could, like, how flexible is that, basically? Like, if E S D is like, wow, the farmer's almanac is saying it's going to snow on Labor Day, kind of thing, right, what will we do?
I mean, if it snows on Labor Day, that's in September. So.
Sorry, I guess I was, like, adding a question in there that, like, I do think there is flexibility in the dates, because we did at first say April, but then this year, I think it's starting March 31st. So we just bumped it back to March. Also, I don't know, climate change, I think over time, it's probably gonna get warmer.
And the, the implementation is subject to weather. So often, we just need a little bit of flexibility within the window that's set.
And there's also, there's also, Section 7 of the ordinance gives the ability to terminate it early. Sorry, did you hear that? Okay, sorry, not close enough to the mic. Section 7 allows the program to terminate early if need be.
Can I just tell you that, yeah, we just wanted the guidelines to say it because of implementation, it can't happen on a Saturday or Sunday. So we can't every, we can't put the dates in the ordinance because we, because of reasons like that, in case something's happening, construction, we needed to leave it open to staff interpretation. And generally, yes, it would be sometime between March and November, when it would begin and end. This, the implementation is happening March 31st, but the program actually doesn't begin until April 4th this year, if this should pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other first-round questions? All right. So second-round questions, let's start with Councilmember Pete Motz Smith. It sounds like there's something related to what we were just discussing.
Yes, so on the same, along the same vein, in Section 1, it says the Kirkwood conversion shall be from the 100 East block through the 500 East block. So again, I'm a little concerned about shall be, you know, what if we have construction in the 100 block, or some other reason that one block cannot be used that year? Does this language still provide enough flexibility for the executive branch to make that determination?
Did you want me to take that? I can.
Either way.
Okay. So the language that was added to Section 1, yes, it would seem to require that full street to be converted. However, it says converted pursuant to the guidelines. And the guidelines are generated by the Board of Public Works every year. So maybe, you know, one of the blocks is just not going to be good that year to be converted. Those guidelines can show that. And I think that was the intent, to allow, you know, these, these will be the blocks that get converted. These shall be the blocks that get converted, subject to these guidelines that are adopted by the Board of Public Works. That was the understanding.
So legally, that leeway would be allowed to curtail the blocks, if necessary?
Yes. So the sentence requires those blocks to be converted, converted subject to the yearly guidelines. So the yearly guidelines could say, you know, the 500 block is parklets only due to construction, and it would still be in compliance with that, with, with the ordinance. That, that's the understanding, if.
Yes, so the, the default would be the full closure. And then we, during our preparation process, would determine what blocks might have challenges that year. So for example, this year, there's a construction project on the 100 block that is scheduled to start in the first quarter. So it would seem that a half-block closure would, again, be more appropriate there. And then survey response in the 500 block indicated that those businesses actually supported just the parklets. So it would seem in that case, we wouldn't want to force a closure, just because we have the ability to do it, but we would want to listen to those businesses and not close that block.
Okay, thank you. Did the sponsor want to say?
Is that okay if I comment on that question?
I'll.
Sure. Because this is part of the amendment. This is more, this is a trickier area for me, I would say, as a sponsor, because I would actually prefer the ordinance to say that these blocks will be closed from the 100 to the 500 block for predictability for businesses, and predictability for the public, I would say. So I don't know, I mean, I'm happy to talk more about that amongst all of us, I guess, if there's something in the ordinance that would make more sense for a different, like, add an amendment on the amendment, or something. But because I do think it's hard that, you know, the city could be like, well, we're closing this block this year for something like, sorry, but like, construction, or like, a renovation of a building, where, I mean, I've also heard that the C V S developer would prefer it be closed, actually, in the 100 block of Kirkwood. That would be easier for that project. So I think, I think it is difficult. It, like, takes away the predictability for business owners to kind of have this flexibility in the closure, or the conversion, I'm sorry. I also think, we haven't really talked about it, but the public hasn't been surveyed on this, I guess. There isn't feedback. So I think also saying a couple of business owners don't want this block closed, to me, is not just a good enough representation of what the community wants. So that is where I am on that portion of this amendment.
I have a quick follow-up on that. But the way that it is written in the ordinance, it gives that flexibility to staff every year.
That is my understanding. We, we set guidelines every year.
Okay.
We have to.
Thank you. Other second-round questions? Councilmember Raul.
Yeah, I think that's a good segue, so I have to. But I appreciate the survey, so it, it gives the preference of the business owner. Was there any attempt to say, did they, did they offer, say, a quantitative financial negative impact? In other words, did they say, because of this, commerce is down, my receipts are down 10%, 20%? Or something like that?
Two, we had one survey question about revenue, and, sorry, do you want to answer?
Yeah. Chaz Modinger again. Dee De La Rosa, our Assistant Director for Small Business Development, is not here due to illness tonight, but she could probably better answer this question. I believe last year, and the, or the year before, she attempted to get kind of more statistics and actual numbers, but the survey wasn't super well-received, unfortunately. And so we just have not really been able to get specific numbers for that reason. So the only surveys we have are what Jane just, what Director Cooper Smith said about the kind of vague question of, has it increased or decreased? But we have not been able to get certain statistics.
Okay, that would be helpful, just because, you know, clearly there are trade-offs. You know, some are favorable, some are not favorable. If it's negatively, demonstrably impacting their business, be concerned. If it's just a matter of preference, then, you know, or kind of anecdotal, then maybe it's not.
Oh, I don't have that slide.
I have just one quick follow-up.
Go for it.
So last year, it was reported that churches were affected, or at least one church, the Trinity Episcopal, and we accommodated that by ADA parking. Is that, has that been working for them to their satisfaction?
You know, I haven't spoken to Reverend Seaton directly about this issue, but this is also what I had heard. So I think because we're moving slower on Kirkwood, if there's a conversion that's approved, we will have to find a similar workaround and just communicate with them.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think he's here.
Other questions? Okay, I, I have one. You mentioned in the original ordinance, it had it for the next three years. And in the amendment, it crosses out the through 2028. And it sounds like that makes it indefinite. And I just, I guess I want to clarify that point, that it, that it kind of makes it a, an indefinite sort of proposal. Until when? Like, are we just saying, like, forever, we're gonna, we're gonna have this potential conversion? Kind of left up to staff, then, in terms of exactly which blocks have which things?
So I think I would answer this by going really big picture first, and just say, this is one of the items that was shifted in the amendment, obviously, and that Councilmember Rosenbarger and I talked about, you know, in, in depth and detail. And I think it's similar to the guidelines. So we've established the, the block closure, or the ordinance establishes the block closure as a default, and the removal of blocks as the effort that has to happen annually. And similarly, the original proposal proposed a time-limited program so that we would have to come back and revisit it. And Councilmember Rosenbarger and I discussed it. And so it's really just shifting the, the burden, I think. So the program is defined, predictable. But it exists until we, you know, until you all amend it in a different way, or the future of Kirkwood is revealed, and we begin that construction project. I don't know, if that was to, we will have an answer, but.
No, I could, thank you.
I can help if you need.
I think that, I'm okay, I'm okay. Thank you. One more round two, and then we'll go to public comment. Councilmember Pete Motz Smith.
Has the council and community accessibility been asked to give feedback into the parklet, either the parklets or the closure of Kirkwood?
You know, we haven't asked them directly. We've been working through Michael Schermus, who's their staff liaison. And I have spoken informally to their president. But we haven't formally requested a statement from them. But that's something we could definitely do as we move through to implementation this year.
Can you share what you learned from talking with Mr. Schermus, or with the Chair of the C C A? Or maybe they, they're not authorized to speak on behalf of the whole group. I know, but they are advocates.
I just wanted to jump in here and say, especially with the parklet guidelines, that Michael Schermus, Mike Stewart, and I, and then our other colleagues helped put together. You will notice, one of the new things that we are really excited about that pertains to what you're asking, is Exhibit B, which is the ADA and accessibility requirements that are more laid out. So that, especially because Mike Stewart is in engineering, and because of Michael Schermus and all his extensive knowledge on the matter, we have made sure to outline it very clearly, what needs to happen for these to actually be truly accessible. And we have tried to give grants to make sure people make it accessible. So in a roundabout way to answer your question, we can, of course, talk to them, but we have made sure to put in the guidelines that the Board of Public Works has already passed for the parklet ordinance, that we, and this would be the same for the Kirkwood conversion, that we would have guidelines that really outline what needs to be done to make sure they are accessible.
And then, related to that, are, are there any ADA on-street parking spaces that would be eliminated? And are, can they be replaced by the parking on the cross streets?
Yes, that's part of the evaluation preparation that happens. And I think two years ago, there was an inventory done of ADA spaces downtown, and then new ones were added, specifically in ways that benefited the downtown overall, and the, the use of downtown overall, but that specifically were placed in ways that would work, whether a closure was in place or not. So that's to say, we've recently, we went through that exercise. It must have been in 2022, because I was here for it. And so those will be reevaluated this year, too. Probably not as thorough, probably not a full inventory, but staff will, you know, analyze them.
Yes. More ADA spaces downtown were needed already. I believe it was engineering that was deciding where they would go in, like, 2022, 2023. This came up with the Trinity Church, and we added an ADA space on the cross street for them. They might need another one, I think, in one of their comments, they said, from the survey, actually. So we would, yes, have to reassess, especially with Michael Schermus and Mike Stewart and our department heads, just make sure we reassess and make sure we still have the same amount, or even more of ADA spaces, for sure.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Let's go ahead and move to public comment now, if there is anybody in the public. And I do want to note that, in theory, we're talking about Amendment 1, which is a repeal and replace the, the original ordinance. Though it's all sort of similar to the same thing. I see one person moving forward. There is a sign-in sheet there, if you could sign in, and then you would have up to three minutes. If you are on Zoom and wish to make a comment, you can raise your hand using the reactions tab, or send a chat message to the host. Is our timer ready? Because our timer is a little picky sometimes. Wonderful. So thank you, and you'll have three minutes when you begin. And please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Galen Cassidy. I'm with Uptown Cafe. Just want to start by thanking the staff for putting this together, and throughout the years of the outdoor dining program, and also the council for hearing this out and offering an amendment to this year's outdoor dining program. So I'm here in full support of the, the amendment to the program, to allowing for the conversion on Kirkwood. As a restaurant in this town, we deal with seasonal business. Sometimes, we're a beneficiary of the university. It comes with a great economic driver, but it can also leave us in the summer months, especially with very low attendance in any kind of summer school, with some kind of bleak economic outlook. So this program has offered a big light for, obviously, businesses on Kirkwood, but also ones that participate in the parklets. And I would argue that any, any downtown business would benefit secondarily from all this, due to the, the traffic it brings. In the years that we've done the Kirkwood conversion, we saw actually more visitors in the summer months than we've ever seen in any summers before. We switched to just doing parklets for, for justifiable reasons last year, but we did see a slight decrease in that one year. We're looking forward to going back to a full Kirkwood closure for many reasons, and looking forward to extending this. looking forward to extending this time period so that we can really add greater investment by the individual businesses and also for the city and the staff to really look at this for a long term conversion project that I think we can really make a beautiful, beautiful space that can attract a lot of people to the downtown area. Additionally, I do think this provides the safest opportunity for the outdoor dining program. Obviously, a full street closure would on Kirkwood allow diners to to eat freely without cars zooming by. I know the the speed limit is somewhat slower on Kirkwood, but you're still with the parklet program, you're dealing with cars that could at any minute just jolt over and bump into the barriers and, you know, really damage and hurt some people. You know, we were happy to invest in parklets and build the deck that we did last year, but that was an extremely high expense for us to install, to maintain, to then tear down and store. And I will just be honest, it's just not a viable solution for us. And unfortunately, it's something we can't participate in. But we would have to have some like some kind of opportunity like that in our specific area where Uptown is because of the slope of the street. So unfortunately, parklets aren't viable, but I'm I'm happy about the amendment here and then look forward to a future of outdoor dining. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments in chambers? Come on forward and state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Steve Wolin. This, of course, it was an issue of great interest to me when I represented the downtown. I've always been a supporter of the program, but I've been, I've never really been able to make up my mind as to what would be the best solution. The problem is that in the US, we don't really have a tradition of public, there's not, it's not as often that we have a tradition of public squares or or piazzas or what the Greeks call platias. We have main streets. And what I've seen in the program being when the streets have been closed, it's been a luxury that pedestrians and bicyclists have enjoyed. It's made it very nice and amenable, a street, but it does seem like sort of a waste of space. And that if there was, I mean, the whole, the point of it is is commerce, is creating third place, creating common places. And there hasn't really been a discussion of how to bring more commerce to the area. Unless you close off the streets permanently, which I think is something that you all in the city are thinking about, and I certainly wouldn't disagree with that. If there were food trucks, if there were other businesses able to to sell their wares, it would fill up the space that's otherwise going empty. For a while, I was recommending that you close off one lane of the street. I was told by Public Works that the effort to put barriers up all the way down the street would be substantially greater than just having the the stanchions that block off the end of the street. But there is absolutely a way to tame cars. You just narrow that street till the design speed of that lane is five miles an hour. You can have the Kirkwood going one way west on the north side of the street, except the 400 block. But regardless, if you're going to close the street and not fill it with more opportunities for people to gather, to make it more of a third place, then I would think twice about it. But I want to encourage the move, I mean, what what the pandemic showed was that Americans do have a hunger for third places, and we have a chance to remake this de facto town square, this open town, you know, piazza, a reality. So I want to encourage you to think that way. I'm not sure how that would affect the amendment before you or the proposal as a whole. But, you know, I like the way you're going. I just want to encourage more opportunities to make it a place where people would gather a purpose to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody on Zoom who wishes to make a comment? Great, thank you.
Closing certain blocks of Kirkwood could negatively impact our senior population, those with physical disabilities and local businesses by restricting people's access to businesses in the area. Navigating around closed streets can be inconvenient and potentially unsafe for older adults and people with disabilities. Closing the street may disrupt public transportation routes, making it difficult for them to reach their businesses, especially if they have mobility issues. Reduced accessibility may lead to a decline in sales for businesses as well. This can be particularly challenging for small businesses that rely on local customers. Street closures and parklets reduce the availability of parking spaces, making it harder for seniors and people with mobility issues to access businesses. For many older adults and people with disabilities, visiting local businesses is a way to stay connected with the community. Street closures can lead to increased isolation and reduced social interaction. It is estimated that there are 10,000 people turning 65 each day in the US. It's important to consider the needs of an aging population and people with physical disabilities when planning street closures to ensure that they can continue to access businesses and maintain their quality of life. Closing Kirkwood and parklets were appropriate responses to the COVID pandemic that are no longer needed. For the reasons stated herein, I oppose closing Kirkwood and oppose parklets.
Great, thank you. Are there other commenters here in chambers? Please sign in and state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Susanna Quilla. I want to thank you.
If you could pull the mic down.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Somebody very tall was speaking before you.
Never had that luxury, unfortunately. I want to thank you, the council, for the amendment, to staff for the interaction regarding the original proposal, proposed ordinance. I'm a member of the Kirkwood Community Association. We have had a plan for Kirkwood dangled in front of us for decades. And in fact, I think there's a plan on the shelf somewhere here in City Hall. Please don't think that the lack of responses that survey represents our organization. In my archived emails since 2020, I found five surveys. So we kind of never get really the total results, and a lot of us just stopped responding through the years. So I do think that consistent closure will allow for continued economic development. If you've seen the handmade market on Kirkwood, fantastic. If we could get the Fourth Street Art Festival to move there, it would be unbelievable. We have such an opportunity to host events on Kirkwood with the closure, and we can help small people developing small businesses find other audiences. And I think it'd be a great economic outreach for our community. The COVID effects persist for restaurants. We have been unique in the amount of local restaurants that continue to survive on Kirkwood. The university understands that we have a lack of economic activity here in the summers. Students just aren't here, and if they're here, they're often online and in class all day long. Allowing for a third place that is safe, that is walkable, that is bikeable, that allows people to gather in a safe way. We don't know if there's another variant coming. We don't know what the future is. But we have a unique opportunity to continue to gather our community. And if you're like me the last couple of days, we need our community. We need safe places to gather together because a lot of forces are trying to divide us. This is a hard topic. I really do believe perfect, in this case, can't be the enemy of good. We have a good program, and we're excited with your interest and concern in making this long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any commenters on Zoom at this point?
No hands are raised.
Okay, thank you. Let's go forward in chambers. If you want to step up and sign in and state your name for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Oh, hi. My name is Jennifer Muyazinovich, and I have a business on 120 East Kirkwood across from CVS. But I've just been there three years, so I don't, I wasn't planning on saying anything, so I'm just kind of off the cuff what I've just heard. But I just wanted to say two things that I I totally agree that that would be awesome to have like an open community space, like a piazza in Europe where you, so so definitely if it were going to happen, I think it would be great to like right away, like this gentleman was saying, to utilize a space or to plan things that would draw people to that open space other than just, you know, eating. And and then the other thing I just have to say is that I came to Bloomington in 1992 as a freshman, and one of the things that first struck me and my dad was like, wow, people cruising up and down on Kirkwood. This is cool. It was like the 1950s, like they used to still go up and down. And even today, I it was my day off, and I didn't know what to do, and I'm thinking about a lot of things. And I just, I do love to drive up and down Kirkwood because you do, without getting out of your car, feel connected to the community because it is kind of the main line, you know, between, someone called it the Champs Elysees of Bloomington, Kirkwood. And so it is easy to see it from your car. So so that's the only thing with my business, too. I pay for that spot, and it's really hard, and it is nice. I know I leave the lights on 24 hours a day because people driving up and down, I know it's like a billboard, they see it 24 hours a day. So that amount would be cut down, you know, with people not driving on it. So but 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 again, I love sitting at the Uptown Cafe under those umbrellas, and you can see the, you know, the the square there. And I always say, oh, I feel like I'm in Paris, you know? So I love that, too. So I think it would be to to find the perfect way to do that would be really cool. But but I understand when people say it would be sad to cut that off, especially for older people, because I always feel connected to the community just driving down Kirkwood, through the whole city in general, I mean, downtown, but Kirkwood in particular, you know? But that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next commenter here in chambers, please sign in and then state your name for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
I don't have a problem being loud. Sorry. First of all, I wanted to just recognize Galen Cassidy because it's great to see a younger generation stepping up and speaking up and participating in the legislative process. My name's Bob Costello. Sorry. President of KCA, Kirkwood Community Association. And I'll go back to thanking Galen Cassidy for participating in this legislative process. Thank you to the representatives for bringing this amendment forward. And I speak on behalf of the KCA. This is a really important program for us for a number of reasons, and most people think we're just here about the financial reasons. It's really about the community and the investment that we have in the community. If you remember when Kirkwood was closed, you could sit at a table and you could run into other people who are walking their dogs, riding their bikes, visiting with their parents, and these were most of the locals. We're not mentioning in surveys, when we do the surveys, the visitors, the tourists, the students, the parents who come with their child to look at the university. It's a really unique thing that Bloomington did during the pandemic, and it shouldn't stop because the pandemic's over. As Sue referred to, and as others in this room would would definitely say, we all lead a much more isolated life than we did prior to COVID. And what we do need to do is have more interaction with people and more random interaction, not playdates as we're doing as adults now. We we need to run in to people in the community, talk about what's happening in the community, what what's needed, what's going on. So I think that has a lot of value. One other thing we haven't discussed is the safety issue. And if you you know Kirkwood, it's a 24-hour area, and most of us are not out between 12 and 4:00 in the morning, but it is very vibrant, to use one adjective. And the safety that closing Kirkwood provides, students are able to walk through the streets, they're going across the streets without worrying about cars, Ubers, DoorDash. It brings a sense of order and safety to that area, as well as the lighting. I also want to say, there's been a lot of comment about the lack of or the open space that's not being utilized. Part of that is due to the lack of predictability with this program. It's really hard as a business owner to think about spending money on capital improvements when you don't know year to year if this program's going to continue. The parklets were not effective. And to your answer, Dave, it it did have a negative impact financially. It's hard to actually quantify it because we are a football school now. We're super busy in the fall.
That's your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other comments here in chambers? Please sign in and state your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Talisha Kopick, and I'm with Downtown Bloomington Inc. And just, we all want downtown to be a strong destination that we're proud of. And thanks to all who are working to create unique and different experiences. I think some of the businesses like Village Deli and Nyx and Uptown have really gone out of their way to make it special in those areas. You know, downtown's used by a lot of different people for different reasons and in different ways, so we do have a lot of mixed reactions to the parklets and to the Kirkwood closures. So I think, you know, it's fair to bring that out also, that people have different experiences. But I think that, I'm losing my voice for some reason, that some of that lack of enthusiasm for the Kirkwood closure is because of the need to like really make it look a lot better and and clean it up and do maintenance there. And public infrastructure and support an active area. The overhead lights are not only important for the ambiance, but also for the safety in the area. Some green space, we're super excited. Some of the bricks are being replaced on Kirkwood this summer. I think the city's done a really good job of of keeping things clean with the different programs that they have. But I think that we have been discussing all of this for years, and I think everybody's ready to kind of go to that next step, so we're super excited. Mayor's willing to look at like a comprehensive approach to connecting downtown. I think that's really important. And just wanted to say we support what the city administration and the council come up with and and support all the work that's being done in this area because it's it's important. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other commenters on Zoom that have decided to raise hands? Nope? Okay, great. Another one in council chambers, please sign in and state your name for the record. You'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, I'm Mike Klingy. I own the Orbit Room Downtown Bloomington. I've been part of the parklet program since day one, the first year that we started in 2020 with the during COVID. And I come back every year and give public comment on this vote because it is still absolutely crucial for my business to have a parklet and outdoor seating. At this point, we turn six in October, which we're really happy to be six. We'd love to turn seven. And also, we'd love to plan for the future. So if like, we could vote on this and decide like a three-year span seems like a very reasonable amount to figure out studies on how things will be affected, is this, and also not be like stuck to it for a long time. And it would allow me to do things like put money into the actual parklet, like even just this last year, it got paved. So I'm going to have to put in a new building permit to level the street with the sidewalk, and I need six weeks to get that approved. And so I need to get the plans into the building apartment because the street's been paved now, even though my ADA parklet was good. But it's okay, we've used it four years in a row, we'll figure it out. But these kind of things help me as a business owner. I don't usually like to plan only two months ahead. So I'm going to keep it short because I actually have to run back to work, but please allow us to have our parklet again. It is a really crucial part to the community, allows us to see people from our underground space that we're in, and it just makes it nice to be downtown. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next in chambers. Next in chambers.
Good evening, council. This is Christopher Andrew from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, and it's always fun annually to come up here and talk about, um, the issue of parklets and the closure of Kirkwood. It's one that the chamber has sort of wrestled with and had like the same comments we've heard tonight. Um, we've continued to hear from our members, we last surveyed them in 2022, and they were sort of split on the Kirkwood, but sort of to echo, uh, Mr. Babcock's, um, line about Kirkwood, what I hear mostly about it, and I think would kind of move the numbers a little bit, is how Kirkwood looks and putting some investment on what this, you know, if we're going to close this, what is it going to look like, the egress, regress issues that are involved in it, and that we have this connectivity, not just of Kirkwood, but we have this Hopewell coming in, we have the Trades District, to have a little bit more of, of plan for it that I think could move some of those numbers where it is not quite as divisive, where if Kirkwood's not looking good, clo- closing it, they're just going to, you know, it just brings out the cynicism a little bit in, I think, um, some of the community. And I think to get past that a little bit would be our, our next step as we move forward. And I have a lot of support for what the administration's trying to do and sort of looking at this holistically. Um, as, as we've seen before, there are just a little bit more things we need to wrestle with, but I think we're heading in the right direction, and I think, I appreciate all the comments we've heard from the public, some excellent business owners, um, that really, really, um, this is their lifeblood, so it's always great to hear that. And, uh, appreciate both that the councils are discussing this because it is a serious issue and one we will need to sort of bring up and see where our progress is as we move forward. Uh, I thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other comments in chambers? I see one making his way, and while he does that, uh, anybody pop up on Zoom? Okay. Please sign in and state your name for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, Mike McAfee from Visit Bloomington. I, uh, I just want to say that, um, I, I understand, um, Jerry's comments online are certainly valid, but, um, when it comes to consistency of this, it certainly makes it, um, easier to market, um, for the long term and be able to promote that. Um, so that's, that's very, that'll help us be more effective. Um, I can tell you, um, TV, Mike Klingy is a very good friend of mine, and those parklets really have kept Orbit Room open, um, this time, and we've talked about it a lot. So it's a big deal for that to be there and, and it's very important for that. But, uh, never had a complaint about, uh, Kirkwood, the parklets, Kirkwood being closed from visitors, um, not one. Um, so, so I think we would if, if, if it was a problem. So certainly it's, uh, it's important for, for tourism and visitors. Number one thing they do is eat, 33% of their dollars are spent on, on eating, outdoor, eating at restaurants. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? All right, uh, moving back to council then, uh, are there any further questions that developed during that period? Okay, I know that I have several, so let me find them. This is, I think, mostly for staff. I realized at some point in this that, uh, in my reading of this, this addresses Kirkwood, but it doesn't address the parklet program on College and Walnut. So can you guys, does it address it and I just missed it? It does? Great. So it just allows for, I'm sorry, can you?
It, it authorizes the, the, the conversion of parking, like, it, the, that table in the middle that says cost of doing the parklet program sort of applies to any place that, that, that it's applicable?
Okay, so does it basically allow any parklet in the downtown overlay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, and I also wanted to note, so if the Kirkwood, um, if it is a full street conversion, will the parklets still need to have those orange jersey barriers or would other dividers or no dividers be used?
So if Kirkwood is converted to a pedestrian space, there would, there would not be parklets on Kirkwood, there would just be outdoor dining. So those establishments with enclosed blocks would be able to put their tables out, and they wouldn't need to be protected because the bollards would be doing that work. So at this time, um, it is still an orange jersey berry for, barrier forward program, but, uh, Ms. Mottinger is working on, um, trying to establish what alternative materials could be available, and I don't know, are you able to speak to that?
So the idea is to try to move away from orange jersey barriers for this year. Um, I am working on presenting with, uh, and I need to talk to engineering and police and safety about the options that they feel good, um, in using, but the ideas could be concrete barriers, barricades, there's multiple different ones of those, those could also be in the form of planters. Um, so basically the options that still seem relatively safe and, and even safer and better than the orange jersey barriers would be steel, concrete, there's also modular parklets that exist that, um, kind of have steel fences and platforms as well that could be safe. Um, but it's all a matter of, uh, just making sure they are safe and we can use them, we have some money in the budget to help with this and also help offset any costs that might, um, pertain to the businesses with this. But yes, we are looking at either probably concrete or steel, uh, barriers in the form of fences or, uh, much like the orange jersey barriers, that style but concrete. And then we also have art to go over that, or we would think of some way to help beautify that if need be.
Right, but those barriers would just be for the parklets as opposed to a full street conversion, it would just be free floating?
Those are the yellow bollards that, like, if you look at any festival, those would be the only thing.
Okay, great. Um, and, uh, I have another follow-up on that. In terms of seating right now, so we're talking a lot about like restaurants being able to put tables out, say on a, on a full, uh, Kirkwood conversion, has there been conversation about, uh, the city putting out more communal tables where you don't have to say be associated with a restaurant to be able to go and like sit and hang out with friends or bring takeout from say, another restaurant that's not on Kirkwood?
Yeah, superficially, we've talked about it, we don't have a plan yet, there's interest. Um, I don't know if ESD has budget for it, but, um, yeah, I think that would be a way to address, um, the usage question, or it would be one of the ways to.
Okay, great. Um, are there other, other questions that came up? Uh, Councilmember Daly?
Thank you. Um, so I was just looking at Exhibit A, and under the eligibility, it says, uh, on Kirkwood Avenue from Indiana Avenue to the B-line.
Yeah, that was, uh, just a mistake. Um, I believe those are draft guidelines that we're even meeting with, uh, Michael Shermus and Mike Stewart tomorrow to work on them, so.
Okay, so we wouldn't be talking parklets?
Those are drafts, they're just not, they're not real, but they're similar to what they would look like. That was another thing I wanted to say, um, the range of fees established by the ordinance goes up to 5,000, which is quite a lot more than what, um, we've charged in the past. We're not talking about charging that kind of money this year. Um, that is a range that, since the program is defined indefinitely, it just assigns a ceiling, so in 10 years, maybe that's what it would cost, I don't know. But, um, I just wanted to establish the pricing this year will be similar to what has been done in the past.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
You anticipated my question. Um, so last year, the, the program had fees and then various conditions, and the conditions were specific to the seating. This time, it's a minimum maximum where you're, you're going to set, but you say it's similar. Is it like per square feet or something?
The guidelines will, sorry, I cut you off, that's so rude. The guidelines will be similar to what we have done in the past, so the occupancy of the restaurant will determine the level of feet.
So how many seats?
And then your, your ordinance establishes the range, so the maximum, just the upper and lower limit of what we could charge.
Okay, it seemed that, uh, last year the minimum was 500, and this, and you're proposing a minimum of 250, 250. So you're actually reducing the fee as a minimum, is that correct?
Um, so last, so there's two different things at play here. I think it's getting a little, uh, confused with the parklet program and then the, the Kirkwood conversion, they're two totally separate things. So for parklets, last year we lowered the price of a parklet to 250. That is what we're proposing still in this ordinance. For Kirkwood conversion, it will be exactly the same as we are proposing in the guidelines that would get approved by Board of Public Works if this ordinance and amendment passes. And it would be, um, it's listed in the memo in Exhibit A under cost, um, but it's the same as what happened, I believe, in 2023. So for businesses with a capacity of under 20, it would be 500. And for businesses with a capacity between 20 and 100, the cost would be 1,250. So, and then the third one is 3,000, 3,500 for a capacity 100 and above. So those are the same as it's been in previous years.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions before we go to comment? Councilmember Pete Motz Smith?
Yeah, related to that, um, so a business capacity, does that apply also to businesses that are not restaurants? Like if somebody wants to do outdoor sales?
So we haven't, um, we don't have a mechanism for that figured out yet, but we know that there's interest for there to be other types of retailers in the street, so I think that's something we'll be talking about internally. It may be that we have an existing business license through ESD that they could just apply for and use, and that would be like, um, not a solicitor's license, but anyway, we, sorry, I, I apologize, I, my recall's bad, but we have, you know, we have a set series of business licensing, mo- mobile food vendor, solicitor, I think it actually might be the solicitors. Um, and then, anyway, so there's a merchant license that allows you to operate in the public right-of-way. So I think we already have a mechanism for that, but we'll look into it and promote it.
Thank you.
Other questions before we go to comment? All right, any councilmembers want to give a final comment specifically on this Amendment One to ordinance, I think we're 2025-02? Councilmember Zulik?
Thank you. Well, I'm excited to support this amendment, um, so I'll just put that out there first. And I will also say that I understand a lot of the accessibility concerns. Um, I wasn't going to say this today because my, the full plan has not been completely fleshed out yet, um, but I am planning on having a listening session just to better understand, you know, what people thought have gone well in the past years when we've had a Kirkwood closure and what people thought had room for improvement. Um, so that will be on February 3rd at 5:30 PM, details to come. Um, but yeah, if you have any thoughts, good or bad, please come share them with me and, um, I will use that information to better advocate for you, so thank you.
Thank you. Other councilmember comments on the amendment? Councilmember, sorry?
I'll just say, I think, just maybe to summarize, um, some, some of the thoughts here, that, um, you know, the long-term goal for Kirkwood remains to transform it into this dynamic corridor that enhances commerce, community engagement, urban vibrancy, the type of things that, that we heard here. And I think, um, part of the idea of this amendment is just we wanted to allow enough flexibility in the short term, um, to address things like accessibility issues, et cetera, while providing a lot of, um, certainty that this is the direction that we're moving in, um, and, and the businesses don't need to come back every year and advocate, um, for, for these desires, while also, um, sort of bringing others to the table. I mean, I think one of the big conversations that both, um, councilmember, um, Rosenbarger and city staff and I had, um, over in the, in the short time that we were working on this, was the sort of broader question of it's not just about creating an outdoor dining program, but about activating Kirkwood in the most, you know, exciting way possible. And I think that, you know, us as a council, hopefully as we, hopefully the president will establish a committee on budget, for example, um, and I hope that this is something that we, you know, prioritize in our upcoming budget of saying like, let's put money not just towards, you know, vibrant outdoor dining, but just for vibrant third space activity, you know? Let's, um, build a fountain in Kirkwood or something. No, but, but, but generally, like, let's bring people there, let's support businesses, let's do everything to make it the coolest place that it can be, um, something that we've been saying, I think, all throughout the year. So I think in the long-term, great cities, they're built through vision, action, and tonight, I think that if we vote for this, we can take a step towards shaping Bloomington's future. Um, again, I think there's a lot more to do, and I really, I think, as according to a lot of the other plans that we already have on paper, but, um, you know, let's continue to invest in a more vibrant, walkable, welcoming downtown, move forward to make Kirkwood not just a street, but a signature experience of Bloomington. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, sorry. Other comments on this amendment? Okay, I have a couple of things that I would like to, oh, Councilmember Pete Motz Smith, sorry.
Sorry, you could go first.
No, go for it.
I'm in favor of, uh, activating Kirkwood and making it a third space, so to speak, for our community to gather. I think, um, that is, um, a great goal, uh, and, and something that could really, um, you know, expand, uh, business and, uh, appeal to more people to, from out of town to come visit. However, I'm a little hesitant, so the legislation initially came forward to us for just parklets. The, the addition of the Kirkwood closure just came as an amendment, I don't know how many people in the public, we've lost the, the B-square bulletin, I don't know how many people in the public know this decision is happening, and so I'm, I'm just kind of hesitant to, to make a decision tonight on something that has only been, you know, public for five days and probably has gotten very little news coverage, if any. So that, that's, that's my one reticence here, because I, I do understand that there are folks that, um, they may not have a handicap parking permit, but they may not be able to walk very far, so they need to park close to where they're going, and if they close off Kirkwood, those people may not come anymore. I think we could probably address that, but I, I kind of hate to launch into this without hearing from more members of the community and maybe from the Council on Community Accessibility, um, they are meeting next week. So, um, I'm a little torn on this one. I, I like the long-term goal, but, uh, I, I hesitate because I feel like it hasn't been very publicized, and so we've only heard from people who are really plugged in.
Great, thank you. Other comments? All right, I'll go ahead and go then. I am generally supportive of this. I, I think that, um, kind of with the, I can't remember the member, which member of the public said it anymore, it's kind of unpleasant, honestly, sometimes to, uh, uh, eat dine in parklets because of cars going by very, very quickly. And so I appreciate the full, uh, street conversion of Kirkwood as opposed to just the parklets, and honestly, I kind of appreciate that concept, you know, anywhere, and I, I wonder if we could think about, uh, depending on how College Walnut parklets play out, closing a lane of College Walnut, um, during certain months in the summer to make that dining experience a little bit more peaceful and secure for those parklets. Um, so I'm, I'm generally supportive of this for that reason of safety and consistency to businesses, I think is huge in terms of extending this program and not making it dependent on council year after year in terms of having this process every year. I think that that's, has some value. Um, I do think that it's really important, uh, that, that if, that the parts of Kirkwood that are converted, uh, have some community space in them that is independent of the, of the restaurants, and maybe that can be something that, that is worked on, uh, you know, with Visit Bloomington and other things, even, you know, minimal seating, picnic tables, that kind of thing, just so that there is something there, uh, that people can gather around that is not just a dining experience at a specific restaurant. Um, I think that that can be important, uh, for long-term activation of Kirkwood as, as many people talked about. I am generally, uh, to kind of speak to Councilmember Pete Motz Smith's concern, I'm encouraged I'm encouraged by the ADA worksheet and that whole piece that staff kind of came up with in terms of, like, thinking about specific guidelines and specific things that different populations might need in terms of figuring that out. And I, I appreciate that. I asked some questions about that last year. And so I appreciate that the number of ADA-compliant parking spaces is being looked at and, uh, hopefully increased in this area to help encourage, uh, all folks with all mobility issues to come down and enjoy this space. Uh, the one thing that I do want to make sure of in terms of, like, giving a long-term approval, whether it's the three-year original one or this kind of unlimited, um, amendment, is that staff come back and, and tell us how it's going, ideally, in my mind, honestly, twice a year, to come back once at the beginning and be like, hey, these are, this is what's happening on the different blocks, because we've left that in staff's hand, whether something has a full conversion or whether some parts of it remain open. So like, here's what we're planning on this year, here's, here are the program guidelines, here are the fees that we're charging within that fee structure. And then another report at, at the end of the year, this is, you know, what, what we experienced, this is, this is what we did. Um, I'm also kind of interested, you know, in that long-term, um, vision of what to do with Kirkwood. And somebody mentioned Fourth Street and the Fourth Street Festival. And Fourth Street is also one of those streets that, you know, isn't always totally comfortable. And I think that there's some really interesting possibilities there for two, maybe one-way streets. I don't know if that would even work or if that would be good for engineering, but I think that these are interesting things to toy with and interesting conversations to have. So, in short, I'll be supporting the amendment in this case. Any other last, oh, Councilmember Rosenbarger has the last comment.
Sorry, I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Piedmont Smith, um, just in, um, because you do have some apprehension. This repeal and replace, what, we use the 2022 ordinance and it is, so it is the exact same that was used in all previous years of this getting approved. So, um, I do feel like, you know, in those years, um, I don't really remember if people came to comment on it, pro or against. Um, but we didn't make any, uh, changes, really. We just used the, what has been used in all the other years of the program where Kirkwood was converted.
Are there any other comments on the amendment? Great. Oh, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, uh, with a two-minute rebuttal, technically.
Yeah, um, I think, uh, you know, the long-term, um, nature of the amendment can be considered, um, beneficial to the city as well in investing in, uh, accessibility and, um, you know, some kind of awayfinding from parking garages in, in ways that the city can, um, mitigate some concerns that have been brought up with the closure. And, and really dedicate some time to that, uh, knowing that it is, uh, going to be a long-term thing. So, so I think that, that I am convinced that we can, I can approve this tonight. I can vote in favor, um, because it gives us, uh, you know, that approve the city budget also motivation to invest and make sure that this is an active space for everybody. So, that's all.
Great, thank you. So with that, I think that we're ready to vote. So will the clerk please call the roll? And to be clear, this is on the Amendment, uh, One for Ordinance 2025-02.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Ruff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So that amendment has passed, uh, with a vote of nine-zero. Um, so in terms of procedure, that does bring us back to the Ordinance 2025-02 as amended, um, which means we have to go back to Councilmember Questions, uh, which I can't imagine that we continue to have any. But does anybody have any? Great. Um, and then that, that also brings us back to, uh, comments from the public. If any member of the public, uh, would like to comment on the ordinance as amended, um, you can make your way to the microphone. You will need to sign in and state your name, uh, and then you would have up to three minutes. And is there anybody on Zoom as well? Uh, you can raise your hand using the reactions tab, um, or you can send a message to the host. And we have one here in chambers. Step up and sign in and you'll have three minutes.
Steve Olland, I wanted to add one more idea to the conversation, thinking about it and listening to other people's comments about, uh, the public place that Kirkwood has always been. I had the pleasure, um, a couple of years back, of visiting the city of Vancouver, British Columbia, and a suburb of Vancouver where the airport is is called Richmond, and it's got a rich history of its own. One of the things we experienced there was the Richmond Night Market, which was this phenomenal festival-like atmosphere where there were lots of food booths and other, uh, non-food, uh, experiences to be had in this big set-off area where you could walk around. And I wonder if a night market isn't, uh, something that might not, uh, work on Kirkwood? If, uh, we are going to close the streets for what, this is effectively a four-year, not a three-year, um, clo- if it closes through 2028, um, that, um, we, I mean, essentially, we institute a Fourth Street-like atmosphere, Fourth Street Festival of the Arts and Crafts atmosphere on Kirkwood during the entire period of, um, the, the good weather that would close the street. That would certainly hasten the, um, the atmosphere that I think everyone is talking about wishing they could see. Not just a place where people can walk and bike through, but a place that people want to stop and dwell in and, uh, and spend a lot of time at. Uh, it would take a lot of, it's a sensitive thing. It would take a lot of conversation with Kirkwood merchants, with, uh, non-merchants who are on Kirkwood, the churches, for example. Uh, but I feel like, uh, especially in the 200 and 300 block of Kirkwood where there aren't a whole lot of businesses and we don't normally close those streets, there's a wonderful opportunity to create a five-block-long, uh, if, giant, uh, multifarious event space. So something I think we're thinking about, uh, if you approve this as amended, I think that's the, the sort of maybe the next step that, uh, city staff and, uh, the KCA and other, and other businesses could take into account. So, I mean, I would encourage everyone to, uh, look up what night markets are like um, and think about how we can, uh, make Kirkwood a, a place to celebrate in many different ways. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are, any other public commenters in chambers? Is there anybody who's raised their hand on Zoom? Do we have a Zoom commenter? Okay.
There is a comment on Zoom.
Great, let's go ahead and move to that comment. Uh, please state your name for the record when you get unmuted and you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, this is, uh, Jamie Shaw. Um, I've enjoyed some of the discussion this evening and, um, something that I've really liked now, go, uh, jump off of, um, former councilmember Steve Olland's comment, and that is about piazzas. They are a central area for people to gather. And I don't think we need to think about Kirkwood as only a place for shopping or going to a restaurant to eat. Yes, that is a draw. But sometimes you are drawn to a location and then you will go to the businesses. So we may be able to see other forms of business, um, be drawn to an area if the city is going to invest in something that is more piazza-like. And one of the things that we, we often think about students, it's near campus, but downtown was a location, very vibrant location for also families. We do have TPS that's still down there. And it would be great to have a location that is also friendly to our young citizens. Our young residents, uh, can feel safe to be in a location, to be social with ages from the youngest to the oldest and all in between. Um, so that's, that's just a little off-the-cuff, um, thought I had, so thank you for the, time for the comment.
Thank you. Anybody else here in chambers or on Zoom? Okay, back to council. Any closing comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Flaherty?
Comment on the amendment and just saved them for now, but, um, I agree with some of the comments we heard, including the most recent one from the member of the public, that this is most centrally about activating public space and creating a great community space. Uh, commerce is ancillary, though it's important and, and a major benefit. I think we did have a couple of comments from, uh, Talisha Kopick and Chris MG about investing in Kirkwood, which I appreciated as well. That's definitely needed. Um, and this is kind of referenced by staff, by Director Cooper Smith. Um, we do have a vision, uh, established in our transportation plan in 2019, which is part of the comprehensive plan, of course, to convert Kirkwood Avenue itself, the design into a shared street with a focus on pedestrians. Uh, envisioned as that, in, in that is a design charrette to gather input of business owners, yes, but also residents, the university, other stakeholders, uh, to help inform that. So I think that's a major investment project. We're, we're probably talking minimum, I, I would guess $10 million, uh, to design and, and convert that, may, maybe less. But, but, um, uh, it's a sizable investment. Um, and wanted to note that we have about $6 million, uh, remaining from what was the Community Revitalization Enhancement District, Creed, uh, that were reverted to the general fund some years ago. Um, I believe we had requested, and we have a controller here in the, the audience as well, um, a report on that at some point of remaining, uh, ARPA and Creed funds. I'm citing that $6 million figure, uh, from a memo from the previous administration uh, that noted what would remain after what was budgeted in 2024. Uh, also just a, a plug to perhaps go from the sample gates, not just to Walnut, but to the Beeline, if we're really talking about networks and, um, activating public space, incorporating the square, incorporating or tying close to, anyway, the, the convention center. Um, I think Pearl Street and Boulder is probably like the best analog here. Um, and I think it illustrates like what's possible with some like real focus, you know, not just like some ballards, but a redesign of the space, uh, literally planting trees, you know, in the middle and creating shade. Uh, that ultimately is the center of the Boulder community. It is a, a street, uh, in thoroughfare, not for cars. It does have car crossings, but it's for people. Um, there is plenty of accessibility, plenty of parking nearby. All those needs are addressed and can be addressed. Uh, it is, again, without question, the center and heart of that community because people had vision in the 1970s to put it together. Uh, so hopefully we can get there here in Bloomington, uh, like some of our plans call for. Uh, also, fun fact, uh, our minutes that we approved today, uh, had us discussing this a year ago, where a majority of us cited, uh, support for conversion, uh, of the streets to open it up to, to all users in this way. Um, and just, um, a note that, you know, I think, I think we could have had a little more collaboration on the front end before coming to the legislative process, uh, with this. I think we all would have benefited, benefited, um, both branches of the city government here, um, in doing that. So maybe, maybe a lesson there. Um, I think that's it. Thank you. Glad to support it.
Thank you. Any other last council comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Um, first, I'd like to second everything that Councilmember Flaherty said. Um, and then on a lighter note, um, I was reminded, uh, by, um, the businesswoman who spoke, uh, about cruising Kirkwood. I grew up in Bloomington and I have to admit that I was guilty of cruising Kirkwood. I was a teenager and, um, we used to get, uh, soft-serve ice cream at Hardee's, which is where Taco Bell is now, and then we curve back around, go south on College down Kirkwood. Now, of course, we know that, uh, that's a gratuitous use of fossil fuels and is not, not a very, um, wise activity. And it's really not conducive to, to building community much because you're just with your friends anyway and just going along in the car. And to end, I'd like to, uh, offer this quote from a James Taylor song. "I used to think that I was cool, driving around on fossil fuel. Then I found what I was doing was driving down the road to ruin." So, converting Kirkwood, I think, uh, would, um, be a good idea and we can hopefully put an end to cruising because it's just not 20, 21st century, uh, reality. So, uh, with that, I will be voting for this.
Thank you. Other last council comments? Councilmember Sari?
Um, I would like to third everything that Councilmember Flaherty said, but then also just to add one other thing to the general, um, conversation that I think we've brought up multiple times and, um, former councilmember Volan is here. You know, I, I also do think that this overlaps with conversations about a circulator, um, downtown, um, which, you know, he did clear studies on. Um, and so, I mean, I think, and we did talk about that during budget for this cycle, you know, coming into next one as well. So just also to keep that in our sort of collective memory, if you will.
Thank you. Uh, other last comments before we vote? Great. Will the clerk please call the roll on Ordinance 2025-02 as amended? Yes.
Zulek?
Yes.
Rosenbarger? Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, that, that passes with a vote of nine-zero. Uh, moving on. Oh, that's you.
I apologize, I forgot I have a new job. I move, uh, resolution, Resolution 2025-01 be introduced and read by the clerk, by title and synopsis only.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to introduce, uh, Resolution 2025-00. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstained. Wonderful. Will the clerk please read?
Resolution number 2025-01, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Bloomington, Indiana, determining after investigation that an expansion of the Monroe Convention Center is needed and other related matters. The synopsis is, per Indiana Code 36-1-10-7, this resolution is required to be passed by the Common Council of the City of Bloomington, Common Council, in their capacity as the fiscal body of this, if the city is going to enter into a lease for a structure such, such as an expanded convention center. In this case, Monroe County and the City of Bloomington, City, have been working together since 2017 to establish funding for and expand the current Monroe County Convention Center. The city previously approved various documents in support of the passage of a food and beverage tax by the Monroe County Council, which would fund the expansion of the convention center. The city also approved an inter-local cooperation agreement in 2024 with Monroe County that created a capital improvement board, CIB, appointed members to the CIB and provided for a city-building corporation to be created by a lease to be entered into for the ownership of the expanded convention center. The resolution affirms the common council's finding that the expanded convention center is necessary and allows for the next steps, which will include a public hearing and approval of a lease to occur.
I move Resolution, uh, 2025-01 be adopted.
Thank you. Uh, it looks like we have Controller McClellan here to present.
Good day to the council. Jessica McClellan, City Controller. And I'm here to present to you the resolution you have before you. These are the first steps in the process to issue bonds for the new convention center. This is just the beginning of the process and there are more steps to come over the next mo- few months. Our end result is that we will issue bonds to build the convention center. We can issue these tax-exempt bonds if we create a building corporation to own the bonds and the assets, the convention center. And the bonds will not count against the city's debt limit. The city will pay lease payments to the city-building corporation equal to the amount of the annual debt service. Those payments will continue until the bonds are paid off. The process for this type of bond is outlined in Indiana Code 36-1-10, as it says in your packet. And the title of that section is ta- is leasing and lease purchasing structures. We are following that code and we are completing some of the steps necessary to move forward in this kind of long bond process, as they tend to be. It's very structured by Indiana Code. So the resolution before you asks for four things. It asks you to ratify that we have gathered 50 petition signatures. It asks you to approve of the formation of a building corporation to assist with the completion of the financing for the convention center. To approve of the publication of a public notice, uh, a notice of public hearing concerning a proposed lease. notice, a notice of public hearing concerning a proposed lease, to authorize the mayor to appoint two appraisers to appraise the convention center property, and to determine after investigation that a need exists for the project. So I'm going to go over a couple of these portions of the resolution with you now. So leasing the convention center from a city building corporation was agreed to by the city and the county. In 2023, the city agreed to it with the passing of the first interlocal agreement, and then again in '24 with a slightly amended interlocal agreement. A building corporation is a single-purpose entity. It is a separate legal entity created by a town or city, and it manages a specific real estate project, like a new building or development. And its primary goal is to isolate the financial risk and liability related to that project from the municipal municipalities' overall operations, essentially acting as a firewall to protect the city's general funds if issues arise with the project. The building corporation is only allowed to own and operate the convention center, preventing it from engaging in any other unrelated activities. It protects the city's assets by isolating assets within that single-purpose entity. This protects the city's general funds. It is appropriate for large construction projects, like buildings, municipal buildings. The current Monroe County Convention Center is owned by the Monroe County Capital Improvement Board, and the jail was owned by the Justice Center Building Corporation before those bonds were paid off. It was the exact same sort of structure, a bond-lease structure. And the building corporation must have clear bylaws regarding who manages the entity and how decisions are made. So that's a little bit about the building corporation. And so, second, we also are asking you to ratify that we have collected 50 petition signatures, but I think it's very important to point out to you and the public what that petition, what those petitions signers sign to. The wording on the petition, I'm going to read it aloud for the record, is requesting the common council to commence proceedings to secure a lease under Indiana Code 36-1-10, providing for the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of an expansion of the existing convention center to be located in the city, to be completed by an Indiana nonprofit building corporation, or to be formed and leased to the city, all in accordance with the provisions of Indiana Code. And we also ask, Indiana Code requires us to have you approve that we hire an appraiser. We also have to publish a notice of a hearing on a proposed lease. And the final thing is to find that a need for the project exists. I included in your packet the most recent market analysis for the new convention center. The food and beverage tax was expressly passed to build a new convention center, and this body has been involved throughout the many years in passing an interlocal, overseeing the CIB's budget, CIB meetings and presentations, and joint meetings with city and county on the need for the project. We feel that the city council's involvement in discussion of this project over the years, in the passing of resolutions and the interlocal, in the attendance of meetings, is reasonable evidence that an investigation has been done by each of you into the need for this project. So with that, we ask for your support of this resolution. We have a lot of people here to give additional information, Corporation Council Margie Rice and members of the CIB, and people invested in, visit Bloomington and tourism here. So feel free to ask.
Great. Thank you, Controller McClellan. Questions from council? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, thank you for this clear presentation. One thing that I'm not clear on is the appraisals and why those are needed. So I guess the whole ownership of the property is a little bit hazy for me. So it belongs, the county gave it to the CIB, and the CIB is going to give it to the building corporation?
Exactly, yeah. That is also in the interlocal.
And so the appraisals are just for the sake of issuing bonds later, or what is the appraisal for?
The appraisal, I am going to ask for if an attorney can help me because I assume that it says, all I know is what it says in Indiana Code. I'm not really sure what the background is on that.
And I'll, oh, gosh. Margie Rice, Corporation Counsel. I'm also short, not nearly as tall as Steve Volin, or Jessica. So the Tenley, I want to point out that Tenley Drescher Rhodes, who's our outside counsel with Fegri, Drinker, Biddle, and Wreath, is also online. I'm going to answer the appraisal question, but she can raise her hand if she wants to add anything. So the appraisals are necessary to assess the value of the property on which the convention center expansion project is going to be built. We will, if you pass this tonight and you find that this structure, this convention center, is needed, we will allow us to create a building corp. We will create a building corp that will own the expanded convention center during the period of the bonds. After the bonds are paid off, our interlocal says that we'll transfer that to the CIB that was created by interlocal agreement. And so it's necessary when you're, you know, to understand the value of the property as it is now. And so that's why the appraisals are needed. And again, we'll look to see if Tenley wants to raise her hand or if she wants to add anything, but essentially, we just need to know what the value of the property is now before construction.
Thank you. I guess I would want to know what, does the value of the property, what bearing does that have on future steps?
Yeah, well, so, and I will also say that I actually had texted Tenley earlier today, and she said, the exist, you know, we were talking about whether there were existing appraisals or not, and she said that they need to take into account the project to be built, too. So she expects that we'll need new appraisals. So one of the things that we'll be doing is figuring out, you know, how much money we need, what we need to bond for. But we are going to appraise the current convention center, the land, and sort of understand the value of that. Does that help answer your question? And then we're, and maybe I should jump to the next, some of the next steps. And just to point out, we're going to have a work session with the council on February 12th, where we're going to be sort of going over some of these things. But, and I think there was an estimated timeline in your packet. It's been updated a little since. I will point out that the March 3 public hearing is really March 5, because March 3 is a Monday, March 5 is a Wednesday. But that's when we'll have the public hearing, and taxpayers can come or, you know, members of the public can come and object and hear about the project. But, you know, and you're going to get a lot of information at that hearing about the project and the plans and all that we're being, that's going to be built. But I don't know, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, if I've answered your question or if you still have questions.
Well, I mean, it's always good to know the value of the property that the building corporation is going to hold. I just wondered if that was, since it's in code, that's required, I wondered why.
I, I don't know. I don't know if Tenley knows why it's in the code, or Lisa knows why it's in the code.
Maybe we should have collateral to make sure that the value of the property has some reasonable relationship with respect to the debt and the financing that will occur later.
Although the debt will be based on the food and beverage tax revenues.
The debt will be what?
Based on food and beverage tax revenues.
Yeah, we certainly have to have enough money to pay that debt, but yeah, but we will only issue enough debt that is needed to build what we are intending to build. Does that make sense?
Yeah, of course. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Other questions from council? Okay, I have, I have a couple. So in terms of, and maybe we'll hear about this more on the 12th, and so if that's the case, just say, like, we'll talk about it then. I guess I'm, I mean, we're authorizing the formation of a city building company, and I'm wondering who's going to be on that. Like, how are those members selected? Like, how does that, how does, how does that work?
We can answer that. It's a three-member building corporation, members appointed by the mayor. And so that building corporation has some meetings that are in the timeline to do some actions that are necessary, and then they need, have to have an annual meeting every year after that.
Great, thank you. I think... Yeah.
The city's special counsel has her hand raised online.
If she has something to add right now, that would be great. I think that I might have one more question, but we'll see if it still exists after this comment. When you unmute, if you could state your name for the record.
Hello. Hopefully, I'm unmuted now. Sorry.
That's okay. We can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you. I was, I had raised my hand earlier.
If you could, if you could state your name for the record, that would be great.
Oh, sure. Tenley Drescher Rhodes with Fegri Drinker Law Firm.
Thank you.
And I, I had had my hand raised from earlier when Margie was speaking. Just to, back to the appraisal question, and in order for there to be a lease arrangement between the city and the building corporation, you need to know, you know, the value of the asset that is to be leased so that you can determine the proper lease rental amount. So that is the reason for the appraisal process, as well as to determine the sale price to the building corporation.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Hopefully, that was clarifying. I have another property ownership question. So is that property currently still in the hands of the county, or has it already shifted to the CIB?
It's still in the hands of the county. They're finalizing the deeds with the CIB and Margie now. They have been looking at draft deeds, and so it's still in the hands of the county.
Okay, great. Are there other questions from councilmembers? Are, yeah, attorney?
Just a comment to follow up on the controllers. I did see the title commitment today that was recently provided with respect to the real estate, and there are one or two parcels titled in the name of the county still, and not in the name of the CIB.
Okay, so it sounds like that's still a work in progress, then?
Yeah, I don't do that really as an issue. It's contemplated that the property will be transferred to the CIA, CIB.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and move to public comment on this matter, then. If anybody would like to make a public comment on Resolution 2025-01, you can make your way to the podium, where you can sign in, state your name for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes. And if there's anybody on Zoom interested in commenting, please use the reactions tab to raise your hand, or you can send a chat directly to the meeting host. We'll go ahead and start here in chambers.
Good evening. John Wyckard, I'm president of the Capital Improvement Board. Just simply wanted to say it won't surprise you to know we're here in support of the resolution. I did want to mention that other members of the CIB with us tonight, Jeff McKim, who's just recently been appointed by the county council as a member of the CIB, Joyce Polling, Doug Bruce, who's vice president of our board, and I want to express my appreciation to you for your reappointment of Mr. Bruce to our board. He's the only architect on our board. I'm a retiree. My time is free. Doug devotes his professional time to our biweekly construction meetings. His insight, the questions he asks have been very important in this design process, and we appreciate your, your doing that. Secondly, I'd like to express appreciation to councilmembers Piedmont Smith and Zulek, who attend as many monthly meetings as I do. They've been in attendance regularly. Isabel certainly makes comments and observations at our meetings that are very helpful to us throughout this process. And I want to recognize, too, that we have members of our BEAD, our Bloomington Entertainment and Arts District, who are here with us tonight. Some of them are doing double duty because they were also here on your Kirkwood resolution, but we appreciate their involvement as well. This is the 25th public meeting on this project. That has included both our monthly meetings, interviews we've had with consultants, public input meetings, the input meeting that most of you attended in October when elected officials had input into the process. And we appreciate your consideration of the resolution and hope you will, you will do that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think we lost our timer in there, but I appreciate Mr. Wyckard. I don't think exceeding three minutes. Are there any other comments on this piece of legislation? Is there anybody online who wishes to make a comment? To our attorneys, are there any hands raised on Zoom at the moment? No? Okay, great. We'll continue here in chambers. Please state your name for the record, and you have up to three minutes, and it looks like our timer is back.
Hi, my name's Talisha Kopick, on behalf of Downtown Bloomington, Inc., and the Convention Center Management Company. Thank you for consideration of this resolution, moving the expansion forward. It's been exciting working on this and getting to this point. Face-to-face meetings and events play an integral role in bolstering our local economy, bringing new money to the community, supporting business services in key sectors such as the food and beverage, hotels, lodging, travel, and tourism. We saw event attendance grow in 2024, and number of events grow. '25 is holding strong as well. The projects needed for updated space and safety, security, technology, connection to the downtown and redevelopment of the south side of downtown. Some local fundraising events coming up, 100 Cooks Who Care and the Hoosier Hills Food Bank, Soup Bowl, that are big fundraisers for our local community next month, and they both sell out, so get your tickets now. Additional events coming up, conference this Saturday, we have Veterans in Farming, and it's kind of a new project that the state has started to get veterans involved with new types of work. Indiana Council for Exceptional Children's Special Needs Education, IU Environmental Resilience Institute, CSAB's Animal Behavior. All of those are a couple hundred people. And then we've got a new one coming up, Indiana Vintage Market, that's over 1,000 people. And we have more. I've got a list of 20 here that are over 500 people at this point. These are all groups that are growing. They're excited to come back, and we're looking for, like, more appropriate space for them and for our local community to host their events. So we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Has anybody raised their hand on Zoom? Great. We'll go ahead and continue here in chambers. Please state your name for the record, and you have up to three minutes.
I'm Galen Cassidy. I'm a member of the BEAD Advisory Committee and also a member of the Food and Beverage Advisory, or Tax Advisory Committee. We're very excited about this project. It's been in the works for a very long time now, and as a restaurant that is, that is collecting this tax and talking to people on a daily basis through the guests that we serve, I can tell you that a large majority of people are excited to get this project finally going. So I know it's been a long time coming. We've got a lot of bumps in the road with, with COVID and everything that happened throughout that time period, but as we, you know, think about, again, activating Kirkwood, the downtown But as we, you know, think about, again, activating Kirkwood, the downtown corridor, the Bloomington Entertainment Arts District, you know, reinvigorating all of this, we need these kind of projects that really are beacons of the future of Bloomington. And I think as we look to attract younger people to this community, new business, projects like these are very exciting because they, they allow us to incorporate business, arts, the community, all into one space that can be used for multiple facets throughout this community. So I'm in full support, and I, I'm excited to see this project going. So I appreciate your time and hearing this, and hope you consider supporting as well.
Thank you. Next here in chambers, please sign in and state your name for the record. Let's give our staff just a minute to reset our timer. And it looks like we're good to go. You have three minutes, thank you.
Good evening again, council. This is Christopher Inby from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, supporting this resolution, echoing many of the same thoughts the public speakers before me have done. I want to say I appreciate the council's vigorous debate on this, asking questions, and being real partner. The city staff has done that as well. And this has been a great collaboration with the county and the city, working together. And the CIB has done a wonderful job, and the progress being made, I think, really, in a short period of time, is really phenomenal. And I also just want to bring a little bit up, we talked about with Kirkwood and sort of that revitalization and making a very living space. I think this is an opportunity to do that on the, the south side of the square, which I think could use some, some TLC, and to sort of rethink some of that space. We talked about the College and Walnut Corridor, and that we're looking at that. And that includes that area as well. So we have a real chance here with the Convention Center to sort of do that and have a real vision of this community. And looking forward, it's, it makes me excited, I think, the direction we're going. And I think we can reverse some of these trends with not enough working age people entering into our community. So this is really another step in that direction, and I appreciate your time tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Has anybody raised their hand on Zoom? Okay, great. Is there another commenter in chambers? Please come forward, sign in, and state your name for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
My name is Jennifer Muzinovich, and I just want to say something as a person who, I'm involved with an upcoming BEAD that's going to be new, a new version of it. But I think it's really great that the Convention Center will bring in all of these people from all over the country. And then they have a, a big chunk of money that's going to go just for artwork and everything inside the Convention Center. So I think that's just going to look really good and highlight art, us as an artistic community. And then also with my business downtown, I'm excited that everyone will come into town and look around and see what's new, especially with the Kirkwood and how it's going to be really awesome, that it sounds like. So anyway, thank you for that. And just every time I drive down and see that big empty space and imagine that beautiful building that they're working on, I think it's really exciting. And also, I just want to say, just watching the whole process play out, it's been really great seeing how they're getting the community feedback and everything all along the way. So that feels, I know it's hard, everyone has different ideas about how things should look and everything, but I think that everyone on the CIB can feel good about, they really have listened to people and incorporated their ideas and everything, so. But thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Next in chambers, please sign in and state your name for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
My name is Jen Pearl. I'm president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. We serve all of Monroe County. We're a nonprofit that brings, attracts quality employment to our community and helps our existing employers grow. So why would we be concerned about a convention center? Well, a couple of reasons. Number one is, you know, we focus on those traded sector businesses that are bringing income from outside of the community into the community. And when we're trying to promote our community beyond our borders, that recognition of Bloomington as a great place to visit, et cetera, is closely tied to visitors to our community. I mean, how do you learn about other communities around the country? It's through travel, it's through conferences and conventions, et cetera. So we think this is a very important piece of the puzzle. It also creates vibrancy within the community and helps to essentially circulate money and provide quality of place by supporting local businesses. So that's another critical area. Among our existing employers and nonprofits, we've seen a greater need for space. I know oftentimes the Convention Center is amazing to work with, but sometimes the spaces are not available, so the extended space will be critical for our existing organizations. And as Chris MG mentioned, revitalization, revitalization of space south of the square is also a very welcome addition to our community as well. And then just on a personal note, as a property owner and resident of Bloomington, I support this as well. So we're very excited to see this moving forward, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next in chambers, go ahead and step forward, sign in, and state your name for the record. You'll have up to three minutes.
Be very quick. Thanks again, Mike McAfee from, from Visit Bloomington. I, I can echo all of those quality of life and, and quality of place things that have been said already. You know, I just want to tell you, we are one of the main, if not, if not the main, sales and marketing organizations for the Convention Center. We, we sell and market all meeting space throughout Monroe County. Interest in coming to Bloomington with your event is greater than it's ever been. We're not trying to be something we're not. In fact, if we weren't already doing this and already successful, we wouldn't want to be entering this arena. We're just trying to meet demand that exists and creating some new opportunities. Just a little bit of an example about that. We hosted the Indiana Society of Association Executives this past summer. The most, the most of their members that ever attended one of their summer conferences came here to Bloomington, and we got the highest ratings of any of their conferences they've ever had. So that was fantastic. We will be in Connect North, it's an organization called Connect. These are, these are trade associations that event planners get together, and there's all kinds of them that were members up. And we travel all over the country and go to this, go to these sales shows. We'll be in Kansas City next week. We have 40 appointments over three days with associating meeting companies like Helms Briscoe, several health organizations, fraternal organizations, and more. We are so excited this summer. We'll be hosting the healthcare professional networks here in Bloomington this summer. They'll be, they've told us 40 meeting planners will be here. We're not sure the dates yet, sometime in June or July. I know it'll probably be more like 20, but we are so excited about that. We will book business in the current Convention Center for that. But I certainly hope we've got some progress to show them on, on what's going on, and because that's a big step in, in going forward. Healthcare meetings are going to be a big part of our future. But lots of activity, lots of interest in Bloomington. It's not slowing down, and we are looking forward to having this new building. So thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you. Has anybody raised their hand on Zoom? And is there anybody else in chambers that would like to speak? Great, I think that moves back to council for either any last questions or closing statements. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. So the city will pay a lease rate to the new building corporation. And this lease rate is going to cover the bond payments because they're the ones going to issue the bonds. And the lease payments made by the city are going to be made with food and beverage tax revenues. Is that all correct?
That is all correct.
Thank you.
Other, councilmember Ruff?
I found the memo from staff to be really helpful, and I appreciate it. Thorough memo that went into a lot of things that I was, questions I had. But I, I'd still really like to have a little clarity on, on some things that staff elaborated on in the memo. And that's the is needed clause. So when I, when I, some, when I read some of it, I get the feeling that the is needed is more arguably referring to that if the project is to go forward, this process is a needed step in it. It's needed to finance it, to fund it, to, to, to set it up in a way that, that works and makes sense for the community. As opposed to saying the project itself is needed. The council finds the project is needed as if we need a reservoir like Lake Monroe, or it's essential somehow, it's essential to the community. I'm less, you know, I expect that some of my council colleagues are less than comfortable saying that as a council member, I find that it's needed, essential to the health and well-being of the community, like the fire department or the, or the reservoir. Can you, can you sort of talk about what I just sort of am asking?
Give a lot of discretion to legislative bodies such as common council here in deciding what is needed within its community. And that need can cover diverse factors. Convention centers in other municipalities have been built using the statute. And so other legislative bodies have found that they were needed in those communities. The case I cited in the memo, for example, the, the resolution adopted there really didn't, did not identify many factors. I think it referenced economic development.
Was that the Fort Wayne Allen County example? I forget.
Allen County.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah. So I, I think that the determination really lies in what you as council members deem is, is needed within this community, whether this project satisfies a need and what that need might be. The controller cited some, some potential needs in, in the memo. If, if maybe that gives you some idea, doesn't necessarily mean that you have to agree with those particular needs. But I think those would all be findings that council could make in support of adopting this resolution to proceed with the project.
Madam President, can I follow up with one quick question?
Yes, please.
Could, would have been possible, or would have been, we would have been prohibited by state law to have used a different word there, to said desirable or prioritized, or, I don't know, anything else. Would it, would, would that have been a possible thing to do?
Sure, I, I think it could have been possible for a legislate, the legislature to have used the word desirable, but then I don't know that that would make the, the decision any, any easier, what, what does desirable mean?
Back to what is needed means, though.
Right.
Okay, yeah, so you've, you've helped. Thanks, thanks for your response.
Thank you. Other questions? I guess I kind of have one, because this resolution is, I mean, it, it's not approving a specific lease document. It's not, I mean, there, I, I heard that there was an intention to have three members of the building corp that are all appointed by the mayor, but there's not actually any information about that in there that we're approving. I'm kind of assuming that we're going to have to approve those details at some point, and maybe we're going to hear about those more, or somebody is going to have to, like, approve those in the future. But I guess I'm just kind of wondering, like, what exactly are we, like, okaying here?
You are approving, you are giving the, the city the authority to create a building corporation. So we will follow Indiana code, where it will have the articles incorporation, it will have bylaws, it will very, it's a very vanilla building corporation is for the specific purpose. But you are authorizing the city to create a building corporation, and that will, will not come back to you. I mean, but it's, they're public documents, we're, I mean, of course, they're on, they'll be on record, and, you know, we can explain every detail of that building corporation to you, we're happy to. But this does approve the city to go and create the building corporation, which we are ready to do.
Right. And so then, and, but that is also sort of necessary based on the steps. Like, if we go back to, like, is it needed, is it necessary? That's kind of necessary based on the steps we've already taken, right? Because it's like in the inter-local agreement and in some of those other agreements that, like, this is how, like, the land transfer stuff has to happen?
Correct, correct.
And so are there other pieces of this that will have to, like, come back to us at this point? Like, I mean, I, I know the bond approval does. But does, like, will the lease agreement have to come back? Or does that end up being, like, solely between the entities?
So the lease agreement is between the building corp and the city. The city is going to be the leasing agent, and that's also in the code. The leasing agent means the board or officer of a political subdivision with the power to lease structure. So that's the, the city executive side will lease this from the building corp, will create the building corp. The public hearing, that process is going to be here in front of the council. So not only will you issue the bonds, but we'll have the public hearing here at the council.
The, I'm sorry, the public hearing to approve the lease?
The public hearing, if you look at the, let me grab the timeline. I want to look at that real quick and just point you guys to that. So the timeline has the, that error that said March 3rd, but it'll be March 5th. The meeting in the common council to approve the preliminary plans and specifications and the cost estimates for the project, to conduct the public hearing on the lease. So that will be here. And then adopt the resolution authorizing the execution of the lease, pledging the food and beverage tax and the lit revenues, the lit will only be a backup, to the payment of the lease rentals, approving the issuance of the bonds, and then approving the appraisal of the, of the project site. So in the proposed timeline that was given to you guys, March 5th, those things will all be here at this council in front of you guys.
Okay, so that will be, I think that some of my questions will get settled on February 12th, so I'm going to stop.
Yeah.
Asking them, because that's the kind of, that, that kind of details in terms of, like, what legislation has to come back before us and in, and in what, whether they're resolutions or ordinances, because then there's appropriation ordinances, too, at some point, so.
Right. Yeah, and I, I have a draft articles incorporation and bylaws. We have a draft lease. Nothing's been finalized yet, we're still working on those. And we're, my office is working with Tenley. And so, yeah, all of that, again, happy to, you know, as these drafts get farther along, you know, get them to you guys.
Okay, thank you. Any other last questions, or are we ready to go to comments? I think we're ready to go to comments. Would any council members like to make a comment on this resolution? Councilmember Felarty?
Sure, thank you. Just to note that I definitely appreciate the work that folks put into this and their enthusiasm for the project. But for quite a few reasons, not all of which I'm going to detail tonight, I actually don't agree with the findings and proposed actions in the resolution, so I'll be voting no. Just wanted to note that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, it is tough to vote yes on something that says we need a new convention center. I think that is an exaggeration. I mean, we hope that a public investment in a convention center will be the best use of public funds for our community. But I think it's not been established as a need. Like, councilmember Ruff gave examples of, you know, clean water or.
Fire.
Fire protection or things like that. I understand, however, that this is kind of one
I understand, however, that this is kind of one of those administrative hurdles that has this kind of awkward language in it that is an additional step down a road that we've already started down. And that was initiated by the county council enacting the food and beverage tax eight years ago. And I think I will vote in favor, even though I don't really agree with this language, but I will vote in favor with the understanding that this is kind of a technical mumbo jumbo that is just required as a hoop to jump through. But yeah, I'm troubled by the wording that a need exists for this. But I guess that's overridden by my desire to not put up a roadblock when so much progress has already been made, and a tax has been passed specifically for this purpose, and taxpayers have paid $25 million, are ready for a project that we hope will be a benefit to the community.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Rallo.
Yes, since we're on the topic of need, I thought I would expound just for a moment because, like my colleagues, you know, I do want to make a, to state that, you know, convention centers, civic centers aren't a necessity for a community, they're not essential. But when we began this process eight years ago, it was clear to me that an economic anchor for businesses downtown that suffer seasonal scarcity of revenue was an important thing to achieve. And this is an expansion of the existing convention center that we've discussed in the past, too, that this is going to be a civic space, as described in the interlocal agreement, which is important to the community, I believe, as well. So the need, I think, here is to proceed with what has been an year commitment and to see it through. So I'm going to vote yes on that basis. And I want to thank the members of the CIB for their work on this. Really appreciate the long hours that you put in, in your commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments? I'll go ahead and make a brief comment, then. I agree with councilmembers Rallo and Pete Motz Smith that the need right now is the need to continue to travel down the road that we've already traveled. I think that we've made some commitments in the interlocal agreements and other documentation. And so, you know, there could certainly continue to be debate. I think there will always be debate over, like, do we need a convention center? Do we need to expand this, like, piece of economic development? What are the pros? What are the cons? All of the things. But at some point in that debate, it was decided, well, yes, we do, so we're going to collect this tax, and then as a result of that, we're going to create all of these things, and this, that, and the other thing are going to happen. And I've said it before around this topic, I think it's a little bit late to turn this boat around. So I will also be supporting this this evening, and I'm also looking forward to the kind of larger session to understand how this process is going that's going to happen at our council deliberation session on February 12th. So, thank you. And with that, it looks like councilmember Zulik also has a comment that she has decided to make, so councilmember Zulik.
I just want to say that I'm excited to support this resolution, and also just thank the, you know, four members of the CIB are here, so thank you for being here, and thank you for all of the work that you've dedicated to this project. We know that you are unpaid, and we appreciate you.
Thank you. Any other last comments? I keep on calling for last comments, and somebody pops up. Councilmember Ruff.
I'd like, just like to make it clear that, you know, I was really hanging on that word, and needed, and I looked it up in the standard dictionary definition, and I agree that I think we can see this as, given where it is and where we are, and this is a needed step for something that has, a tremendous amount of work has gone into, and it's felt to be an important, it doesn't have to be essential to vote yes on this. We just voted on the Kirkwood, you know, the use of Kirkwood that way, because it's important to those businesses, and it's important. But it's not essential necessarily. I don't think we need to rise to that level, but it is in the language. And just when someone comes to me who opposed the project and said, you voted yes, and you said that it was needed for Bloomington, I'm going to have to quibble with their use of the word needed, I guess. But I do want to also, as others have, appreciate all the work that's gone into this by the CIB members, staff, city staff, support from the B, from the chamber, from BDLC, from all kinds of groups. So thanks, everybody, for, you know, it's been a long, long, hard climb.
Thank you. I'll say it again. Any other last comments? Councilmember, sorry.
Just one last comment, again, thanking the CIB for their efforts and staff for the work here. I think it's really exciting, and it does sort of tie in with the conversation we were having earlier, what Bloomington looks like in five years, when we have this convention center with really cool, walkable Kirkwood and all of that connectivity, I think is, it's nice to see all those pieces coming together, and this cool circulator bus that's go, or tram, you know, that's going in between all of those things, I think is, you know, it's exciting for those pieces to be coming together, and just sort of connecting all of that. You know, what currently is somewhat dead space, I think, is some of the comments, the commenters have said, and, you know, personally, I've said this so many times, just in my professional capacity, often have butted against our inability to host some of the type of things that I think would be really, really great to have here in Bloomington. And so remain a strong supporter of the convention center, glad for all the work that's being done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Everyone's going. I always want to just put my apology out there to the residents of Bloomington, because no one has wanted this. A majority of folks have not wanted this since the idea was first brought up. So I am always sorry that this is how the food and beverage tax dollars will be spent. I know we talked a lot about civic uses, but what we've been told by the CIB is that nonprofits will be able to rent this space, not that we will have anything like a senior center, or like a gym, or a youth center, or a library, or anything like that. So I just want to be clear that our nonprofits will be able to continue to rent the space. Needed is obviously a hard word. I can't say yes to that when want, I would say, doesn't even, doesn't even come close to want. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Daly.
Only because I feel we're left out. Thank you. I'm very excited to support this and vote for this. Thank you all for your very hard work. I know that it's felt like a thankless task at times. And I do think some members of our community have expressed that actually we do have a need for this if we want to be more welcoming to more visitors coming into our community and grow that space that has been requested, and we haven't necessarily had that space for visitors. So, yes, thank you.
Thank you. I think everybody has spoken once now. Council attorney Lainer, did you have something that you wanted to add?
With respect to councilmember Ruff's comments, I think it's reasonable to respond to someone who asked the question, is this needed? That the convention center fills a social need or an economic need. I mean, I'm not advocating one way or another, but I think there are different types of needs, and some members of the public have spoken to those tonight. So those may be helpful in explaining support for this.
Thank you. So with that, will the clerk please call the roll on resolution 2025 dash?
Councilmember Daly?
Oh, yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Asari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Pete Motz Smith?
Yes.
And Stossberg?
Yes.
Thanks.
So that passes 7-2. And that brings us to our second period of public comment this evening for matters not on the agenda. If anybody is interested in commenting on anything that was not on our agenda this evening, please make your way to the podium. You'll have three minutes. Please sign in, state your name for the record. And if anybody is on Zoom and wishes to comment, you can use the react tab to raise your hand, or you can send a chat message to the host. Let's go ahead and start here in chambers.
Good evening for a third time, council. This is Christopher M. G. from the chamber, and also a resident. So I wanted to, we talked about third space today, I just wanted to comment before I get a little bit of business. I came from Twin Lakes recreational area right before here. I was a little late, because during this time, it's the third season of Twin Lakes basketball, which they have these games Monday through Thursday. I was excited to talk to many people there, some neighbors, some friends, some people I just sort of run into. And so I'm promoting going to our award-winning Parks program, Twin Lakes Basketball during the season. We have one of our O'Neill fellows is coaching the fourth through sixth grade girls team. I'm not coaching this year, I, my son's moved on to my ability, but it is a wonderful place to go visit, have some popcorn, and enjoy some wonderful youth basketball here in our community. One thing, and I've kind of gone to a couple bodies, we had, I think it was two weeks ago, might have been longer, we had our legislative preview event. We had councilmember Zulik and Asari were there, if I'm not mistaken. And we bring out our agenda, it doesn't change a lot during each year. But how that works is we survey our members, they come back with some responses, we had a great response rate, I think of close to 200 this year. Then it goes, then I do some drafts, it goes to the advocacy council who sort of debates it. And then it, we make some changes, it goes to the full board for approval, and voila, here we are. And I just want to highlight one of the things that we, I mentioned a little bit in earlier public comment, but collaboration, specifically city-county relations, and this is what we've sort of seen and improved over the couple of years that I've been here, and I want to say a good job to the council for that. I think it's important that we sort of work as a community, not just in silos of Ellisville, of the county unincorporated area in the city, but working as a community together. I think especially in terms of economic development, that's very important. And thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment here in chambers? Is there anybody online who's raised their hands? Great. I'll echo the Twin Lakes Basketball thing. I coached Twin Lakes Basketball for a couple of years, and it is quite a hopping scene down there. Moving on to our final thing, any notes on council schedule? I will note that our next regularly scheduled meeting is two weeks from tonight on February 5th, and then our next deliberation session is on February 12th. Does anybody else have anything to note about council schedule? Councilmember Pete Motz Smith.
Interview Team B will meet tomorrow at 4:00.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Meeting is, oh, councilmember Rosenbarger.
Wondering, we down here were wondering if maybe the second Wednesday in February should be changed to a regular session.
For what purpose?
If it's useful.
I'm not sure that it would be useful in February. But so the two pieces of deliberation, we are going to be hearing more about the convention center process. There are some things with that, that the controller and attorneys are interested to make sure that we understand in a less formal setting. And then I also want to circle back around to what we discussed last week in terms of budget committee, budget task force, and I'm going to be prepared with a more proactive idea about how to move forward, and I think that that will be helped also by Controller McClellan being there related to convention center stuff, so. Okay. Yeah, I hear you, though, on that, and I think that that's something to think about moving forward in terms of legislative cycles. Thanks. Any other comments? We are adjourned, then. Thank you.